All right, folks, seeing that it's 6:01, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Town of Situate Board of Selectment. Good evening, I am John Danahue and I would accept a
So move.
...motion to accept the agenda as notified.
Second?
Motion by Mr. O'Toole, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Moving on, let's go to walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins here this evening? Saying none, then I'm going to move on to the next item, which is a report from the Town Administrator.
John, sorry, I'm not familiar with the rules. I'm just here for a discussion on the toll roads development, but I've not been personally invited, so I don't know if that qualifies as an
That's coming up later in the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Tricia, I'm going to turn to you for the report from the Town Administrator. Good evening.
Thank you. So, this is the first meeting that the boards had since we had the special election on January 10th for the Public Safety Building and the Middle School Project, and I'm sure the board will have some comments about that after my remarks. I think, speaking on behalf of the employees and the staff, I think we're very gratified of the town's support and approval for these projects, and have already gotten lots of inquiries from contractors about when these projects will be taking off, so I do want to talk a little bit about that. Also got a lot of questions about the town's ability to manage and shepherd all these projects at the same time, capably and professionally. And I just want to assure people that we take very seriously their tax dollars in building these projects. It is true, the town hasn't built a public building in a long time, but there's lots of new staff, and lots of new laws, and lots of hard-working residents and citizens who will be helping us do that. And a lot of the same folks who were able to conceive the master plan, develop the schematic designs, and bring this to a town meeting vote are the same people who will continue to be directly involved in these projects. So, on behalf of the staff and the folks that are going to be involved, I give you my commitment, and I'm sure I have yours, to ensure that these are the best projects that we can give to the town and that we can be proud of them. That being said, we have a whole bunch of work ahead of us and a very, very full plate. There's going to be a lot happening in this town in the next two years, in addition to the stuff that we've already been doing that has taken up our time. So I just want to briefly run through what the initial next steps are at some of these projects, and give folks a flavor for what's to come. We're also doing a really big push in the next couple of weeks to have residents sign up for the news and announcements listservs on the town's website. We expect to be giving out pretty timely information on that, and are actually working to improve the website so that we can have more in-depth information about certain things and certain town departments. But if you sign up for the news and announcements, you'll be able to get information about these projects. And one of the ways that we're going to do that is, we are going to, every Friday, develop a week ahead for the Town of Situate that you'll be able to receive in your email, that will give a status report for that week of the projects, or what's happening in town, potential road closures, or just keeping you abreast of where we are in the development of these projects. So, these are in the development stage. We expect the first one to run the first or second week of February, so signing up for those news and announcements is something we're really going to encourage residents to do. So, the first project that was approved is the library, as you remember, and you will be asked to approve final design for the library at your meeting on February 3rd. As you know, the design, the original design of the library, which was a feasibility design, has some changes to it. There was a public hearing last month that solicited input from residents about that new design, and the final design needs to be voted and sent into the Mass Board of Library Commissioners as part of the grant, so we actually can start to prepare bidding documents. The library is expected to move into its temporary quarters at the Situate Harbor Community Building in July, so for all intents and purposes, library services will be shut down in May and June because it's going to take them at least a month to pack and then move into the new facility and get that outfitted. When construction starts in the library, it's expected that our new library renovation will be completed, all things being equal, no unforeseen circumstances, in September of 2016. The second building is the Public Safety Building. We will be issuing a request for services this week for owner's project manager on that site, and their first job will be to work with the architect to develop full architectural plans for the Public Safety Building. The Public Safety Building only had schematic design, it didn't have full architectural, it's not as fully developed as many of the school design projects were because MSBA has different requirements. We expect sometime in June to go out for construction bid, and the building should be completed by September of, and to award the bid and have a shovel in the ground in September of 2015, out to bid in June. That building is anticipated to be completed in November of 2016, so just two months after the library renovation. And finally, on to the Middle School. We expect the construction documents to be developed over the summer, out to bid by mid-October, shovel in the ground before the end of this year, and anticipated having students there, best-case scenario, September of 2017. So, all those buildings will hopefully be up and running within the next two and a half, little over two and a half years. In addition, we will be replacing in those two years another 14 miles of water lines in the town. You've already awarded the design contract for the other seven miles to be done under Phase Two of the water project. We have our usual road projects going on during the year, so we have a lot going on. The other multitude of questions we've been getting phone calls about is, when are all these projects going to hit the tax bill? We are working very hard, as you know, to bond these projects as soon as possible on the long-term bond market. The town has the option to short-term borrow for up to two years before it permanently bonds money, but because the interest rates are expected to increase, we expect to go to the market in March. That puts a lot of pressure on the staff to get a lot of this done. It's always a big job with the rating companies and the financial advisor to bond money. We will be expecting to be bonding about 70 million of the 77 million of these projects. We're not going to bond the whole amount, because if they come in under budget, we don't want to have already bonded. So, we anticipate what we will need for these projects based on the timelines that I just laid out for you, and expect to do that in March. Tax bills in August of 2015 will see the first impact of these overrides, these debt exclusions. So, the one thing folks have to remember is if we bond 70 million, that at some point in a year or two years, that additional 7 million will be permanently bonded. So, just when they think their tax rate may see a relief from the debt and the principal and interest going down a little, we will be having another 7 million on there. Often, people have their bills paid through the bank, and they find out after the fact through their escrow, so if people are pre-planning, they might want to anticipate that August will be the first tax bill that has these new projects rolled into them and might start setting aside some money for their escrow. So, that's all that I have to say relative to the public facilities projects, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Tony?
Quick question on the, do we borrow all 70 million at once, or can it be some sort of tiered? Because obviously, we don't need $70 million on day one, or do we just reinvest it in some sort of fund cash or something?
Right, those are the kinds of questions we're going to actually be looking at in the next few months, and our financial advisor's coming in tonight, I don't know if he's here already, but that's something that you can certainly ask him as far as how they view that. Because again, the interest rate, you've, we've projected all the tax impacts based on a 25-year, some we might want to do the last 7 million or whatever we've on at 30 or 20. There's lots of moving pieces depending on the market and what we get for actual interest rates when we get the bits.
Great.
I just want to say
No, go ahead, I'll go after you, I just had a question for you.
Tricia, I just want to say congratulations both to you and your staff. Wonderful job done by the town in preparation for these debt exclusion overrides, and I just want to commend you, the chiefs, the officers, who are involved in trying to get information out, setting up all the conferences and information sessions, so that people could go out and identify and understand exactly what the town is proposing, what the town has proposed, how it's going to work financially, and also, all the preparation and the people who are involved, the multiple people from the town themselves, the residents who engaged into the committees, the numerous committees, and spent numerous amount, a number, an awful lot of time, their own private time, to help fellow residents out. Obviously, it was, I'm very pleased and very happy that the residents agreed with us, the board, and the Town Administrator, with what we believe to be a very important thing, both the Public Safety Building as well as the Middle School, and I commend the school committee and also John McCarthy for their hard work, as well as everyone else who supported it. I think the best thing is that there are a lot of people, both those who supported it and those who didn't, who came out and voted. It's very important that, no matter what happens in this town, that everybody's heard, and I commend everybody who did go out to vote. And I just wanted to at least make acknowledgement to you, Tricia, because you have worked very hard on our behalf for the past four years, setting in motion and trying to put together feasibility plans, committees, for people to engage and to try to take a look at a lot of things that we've been doing for the past four years. So, I want to thank you personally, and also to the staff who did it too. Well, a job well done.
Can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
More, actually, let's go with
Okay.
Sorry, do you mind?
No.
John, I wasn't here earlier, but have we assigned liaisons to these projects on behalf of our board members? Because we're getting, you know, I think we all get a lot of questions, we all want to make sure that they come in on budget, and there's five of us. Have we taken on a project to be sort of that liaison, to keep track of it?
Well, the Public Buildings Committee actually has Sean on it, so he is our liaison.
But let me just, that's coming up later on, I think Tricia's intention was to put Kevin on that committee along with Nancy, am I correct? To watch over just what Mara's talking about?
No, no, sorry, Sean, I'm sorry if I made you misunderstand. Nancy's going on the School Building Committee.
Well, that's, I think that's
And Kevin's coming off.
Oh, and Kevin's coming off, all right, okay, misunderstood.
And then we have our school liaison, which is Tony.
Tony.
So I guess technically, that would be the school building. We do not have a representative from the board on the school committee building. You're on it, Tricia, I think Sean was on it, you're still on it, right?
That's right.
I know you're on as select, as chair.
That's
But you're still doing
We just met last week.
Okay, so you do, we do.
Okay, so maybe if we can leverage those in addition to the Public Safety and Library, just as a point of contact, so people don't have to reach out to each individual here, they know who to go to to get an update on the library, they know who to go to get an update, you know, they know Sean's, I mean, Tony's liaison for schools, Sean is for public buildings, so would that be public facilities?
Sure, I think that's fine, but I think the difficulty on that is, is that when somebody contacts me, they're going to be like, hey, what's going on? So then I can say, go contact Sean, or I contact, and usually I'm the one that says, Sean, what's going on? I think, the one thing that I envisioned was that, as we begin this process, that we would have, at least for our vantage point, a weekly update as to what's going on with these projects.
That's good.
That way, we could do the same way that we did it in the presentation leading up to the vote, giving a kind of a five-minute presentation of what's going on. I think it would be beneficial for all of us, as well as the public, to know what's exactly happened. We're two weeks in, all right? This is what's happening.
I can, can I just jump in for one second? That was discussed at the Public Building Committee for the school, to continue that committee. It was talked about, you know, should the committee disband? And no, not at all, in fact, they might, might meet a little more frequently. So, to answer your question, if you want me to continue going to those, I will, and I can provide you with that feedback, but that's not the Public Safety Building.
Right, okay.
Tony?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add was, to John, I agree with everything that John said, but we also want to make everybody know that we're very cognizant of the fact that the, both votes barely passed. You know, there was a 300-vote difference and a 500-vote difference on the two projects. So, we understand the financial impact of the projects, we understand all the questions involved in the projects, which I think is what Mara's getting at, that we want to make sure that we inform everyone during the process and that we really keep an eye on the costs involved in it. So this, although I agree with John that these are in the best interest of the town as a whole, it certainly was the closest vote on something like this in a long time. And, and we're very cognizant of that fact, and we're very, very aware of it. One thing I would say is, I kind of had wished more people had gone and voted, you know, for, you know, a huge override in the town to only get 39% of the people voting, I saw a little bit over 40 in the paper, I don't know which one's right, but, but still, I was hoping that we had a little bit more feedback on it, but, but to see that it came to that close was, was, you know, right, right in the forefront of our vision. So, we are certainly aware of all the, all the impacts that these things have on the community, so.
Thank you. All right, Marty?
Pretty much covered everything there.
I do have one more item I report, sorry to take so much time. I just want to give the board an update on the grant that we've received, the $2 million grant and the $2 million low-interest loan to repair Oceanside Drive. As you know, that, that grant is dependent on us obtaining the easements to do the work. We've run into a bit of a challenge this week. Pam Avitabli, our town treasurer, has reported to me that Bond Council is going to require signed construction contracts for the seawall work in order for us to be able to bond that $2 million. We cannot issue construction contracts until we have the easements. I received an update from town engineer Sean McCarthy today. Two residents in the area have denied giving an easement. We have two already, we are working with other residents in the area, but if we do not have those easements, then we cannot do that project and jeopardize the grant. So, we're working closely with the residents down there. Coastal Coalition has been extremely helpful, but that is beyond our control if we do not have easements to do that work. And we cannot borrow the money until we have a contract that we can show Bond Council that actually shows, you know, we need to spend the $2 million. So, I just wanted to
What's the timing, Tricia, on that? In other words, when would we know whether, when the opportunity to take advantage of the $2 million grant is, is no longer available?
I don't know, Kevin, if you know that, or Sean, when the drop-dead date is, or?
I don't think we have an official drop-dead date. Talking to John Clarkson, he was going to wait and see what happens with the new administration, if they will assign timelines, have the project completed. It's, I think we had a year to start off with, so we'll, to get it started, to get everything rolling.
All right, so we have until the fall, if I'm not mistaken, that's when the grant is
There'll be another opportunity for the grants coming up too, if we haven't executed much on this.
So it's two out of 10, or 12, if that, is that the?
I want to say nine.
Yeah, the original grant included, I believe, 11 homes, which was the 760 feet. Now, two on the outer limits have not agreed, which is narrowing our group down. We have two within the center of this group, we can get seven more, we'll still have over a 500-foot section.
Right, so there's a possibility that we can do a portion of it, but not the full extent.
And costs, whether 760 feet was going to exceed the 4 million as well.
That's too bad, that's disappointing.
But it's still working.
Marty?
Just, just for Sean, actually, so if someone in the middle doesn't go for it, does that affect our construction on the left and right side of that? I mean, does it make it more difficult?
Yeah, right now, yeah. Certainly will limit the project. Like I say, the north and south limits, the people weren't up for giving up the easements.
Right.
So, working on the group in the middle.
Okay, because obviously, the outside ones you're going to live with, but the ones in the middle are more difficult.
You want to write, you don't want to leave a, skip a section, that'll drive the cost up.
And it probably could tear the other wall down as well, right?
Yeah, they'd probably have to make provisions to keep it there, yeah, extra support.
Thanks, Sean.
And we're talking, just so everyone's clear, we're talking about an area by 6th Avenue to 10th Avenue, that opening where there aren't any homes, after the stucco home and the brick home going south, correct? Right by the proving grounds?
102 to 124.
So what avenues is that, Sean?
It's like 3rd, 4th.
Okay, okay, all right, I thought it was a little further south.
Just so people understand, we have a policy that if the town's going to be working on, what are in essence, public walls, walls that were constructed way back 50, 60, sometimes some of them go back even further, almost 100 years. These were walls that were funded by the state, federal government, over the course of time, probably to some extent, maybe the town, who knows? Because we don't know that for certain. So, yeah, they are public walls, but they're not town walls, and there's a big distinction there, because I think sometimes people get a little concerned. Some of these aren't even town walls, we're public walls, they're private walls, if I'm not mistaken. Funded by the state way back when, but the town doesn't have an easement, have any legal right to go on the property. And so, we need the neighbors in order to give an easement to be able, enable us to go on, not only to repair and replace these walls, but have an ongoing right to repair or fix them over the course of time. So if there's any cracking, or if there's any spalding, I think they call it, breaking of it, we can go back and we can fix it up, with an easement to go between the wall and the house. Also, so people understand, when you replace these walls, traditionally, we used to come from the ocean side, which costs a lot of money, have to deal with the tides, whereas if we can go from the land side, it's a lot easier, it's a lot cheaper. Unfortunately, some people, I guess, and it's their legal right, have property rights, and they don't want anybody to come on, including the town. But it jeopardizes $4 million, right? $4 million of seawall repair on a stretch that's 760 linear feet. And that's very problematic, because we are trying to do a lot of repairs for seawalls going forward in the next number of years, and people have got to work with the town, work with their neighbors to be able to accomplish this, and hopefully, they will see the errors of their way. That being said, I think that's it, I know we've got a busy agenda, I want to move on, but I did see Don Walter here.
I was just going to say that.
Don, I just wanted to know, if you've got a second, you want to come up? We were just hitting, hitting the timetables. Don Walter, former planning board, I'm not sure if you're chair or not, Don, I apologize twice. It was the architect with Dorna and Whittier, who have designed both the Public Safety Building as well as the Middle School. Don, thank you very much, just on the timetable of the buildings, if
Sure.
We've kind of touched on it, but if you could just maybe go over what we have here.
Great, well, thanks for having me, and it's a pleasure to be here, to talk about successful vote, and the fact that the project's moving forward in both cases. So, I guess to start with the school project, and essentially, what we've done is, we kicked off the design beyond schematic design, which is where we were with the MSBA in November. And what we're going to be doing is, taking the design and construction documents through into the fall, and bid the project on or about the middle of November, which will allow us to start the project in the beginning of December, which is not necessarily the best time to start construction going into the winter, but it's, is what we have, and there's plenty of work to be done as relates to the high school and some of the demolition and things of that nature, and the planning, where we don't think it'll be an issue. So, basically, we'll see the design going for about nine months, bidding for six weeks to two months, starting construction in December, and then taking about 21 months of construction to complete in July, August of 2017, with the goal of occupying in September of 2017 with the Middle School Project. So, and that would be all of the components, the Middle School, the High School Art, and the auditorium piece. So, that's where we are with the, the Middle School Project. Public Safety, we, much smaller project in terms of scale. Our goal is to design that through September, bid it in the middle of September through about the end of October, and we feel that we can actually start by the beginning to the middle of November of this year, with clearing and grubbing on that site, and getting into the foundations at a quicker pace, given the size of the project, and then probably taking anywhere from 12 to 16 months for construction there. So, seeing the following fall to beginning of 2017, I guess it is, for completion.
Great.
So.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Don't forget the bell for Minnet.
Absolutely.
Questions?
No, I don't have any.
Just so everybody knows, John Murphy, Chief Murphy, had indicated that there's a bell at the Minnet Fire Station that's still at the tower there, and he said, it'd be nice to incorporate it into the new building, considering that Station 2 is no longer in use up in Minnet. So, I'm pounding Don here about the bell.
It's in our notes.
All right, Don, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Don.
All right, moving on to the scheduled items, first is a 6:10 employee recognition of Wally Young. Kevin?
This year, as you know, we replaced about seven miles of water pipe throughout the town, and one of the major influences, our best assets the town had was Wally Young. He works for the Water Department, and he was our liaison to the three different construction contracts that we had going on. And we wanted to recognize Wally, he did a fantastic job, above and beyond what is, he was required to do. You know, running back and forth from site to site, I even had complaints of him cutting off selectmen in the road, but he really stepped up and did a, did a great job. He knocked on everybody's door, I had multiple people saying to me how, how great he was. Contractors raved about him, how he was always thinking ahead, and we just wanted to take a little time to recognize it and just say thank you for the great job he did. Unfortunately, Wally can't make it, he couldn't make it tonight, he had something going on with his parents that he had to attend to, but we still wanted to acknowledge his, his great work.
I just want to say thank you. I know Wally, and I know, I see him around, he's constantly out there doing stuff. He's not only working during the weekdays, he's working during the weekends, you know, I see him later. He's, he, like many others, are dedicated, and he does a great job, and so commend him. I'd like to, on behalf of the board, maybe if we could send a letter or congratulations for, for the hard work that he did for the first seven miles, he's got 14 more to go.
That's what I keep telling him. And Wally was great.
I'd love to do that.
He had come in on his days off, you know, he was supposed to be off for the week, and he, you know, you look out and there he is, shutting the water gate off, and you're like, what are you doing? Oh, I just had to shut this off before I went to where I was going. So he really did a great job, and we just want to recognize it.
All right, well, well done.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, moving on to 6:15 update, EPA Grant Update. Nancy Durfee, Nancy, how are you?
How are you doing?
Good.
Nice to see you tonight.
For those people, this is our Coastal Resource Officer, Nancy.
Hi.
So what's this grant we're hearing all about?
Yes, it's a Building Blocks Community Grant from the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, and it's basically technical assistance and not actual funding dollars, where they're going to help the community with resilience and sustainability, out of their sustainability office. So, John Clarkson kind of notified me that this grant was available, so Laura Harbotlan, the planner in town, worked with me on this grant, we submitted it November 20th, and right before Christmas, we got the, the thumbs up, big congratulations, at the top of an email from EPA, that, you know, we were one in 25 in the country to move forward. Federal grants are very difficult to get, so I'm very pleased that we got this one. It's a big feather in the town's cap. It'll be nationwide publicity for the town on the work that we do. So, they have notified us that the press release will go out in January, January 27th, and they'll begin the work in February, and they've asked us to put a team together, so we've put Neil Duggan from the Building Department, Patrick Galvin from Conservation, Laura Harbotl from the Planning Department, and myself, and of course, Tricia, you know, guiding the ship, and we'll meet with a team of EPA directing us through some workshops, and then move on to a six-to-eight-page memo document that will help kind of guide the community in some of our regulations and regulatory measures that we use in our flood zone, which is basically the, the grant that we had asked for. Demerescotta in Maine, as well as Newbury Port in Massachusetts, also received a grant, so they were, we were the one in three in New England.
Wow.
Yeah, very cool.
Congratulations. Questions? That's awesome, that is phenomenal, and I just want to say that, you know, everybody should be very happy. Sometimes people, again, don't realize the grants that this town is able to obtain, and we don't toot our own horn, but here's a prime example of putting it out there, and one in 25 in the country, three, one in three in, in New England, and because of the coastal issues, the flooding, this is phenomenal because of our situation, our positioning, if you will. So, well done, well done for you, Laura.
Well, to the town.
And for John Clarkson to even, to inform us of it.
Right.
We're very fortunate to have people, John is a resident, but also is with the state, and certainly gave us an idea, heads up on it. Many people don't realize when you, I don't know how the grants do it now, but at least when I was in Washington, you used to get the federal register, that's where they'd have it, and you have to go through it to find out the grants are offered. I think it's changed since then, but still, it's somewhat arduous to be able to find out what grants are available, it's not that simple.
It's not, it was very nice of John to do that.
It's great that he tipped us off to it.
Absolutely, so I'll keep you on.
Well, it's great to have you too, Nancy, to be able to
Thank you.
...execute it and implement it, so thank you.
Well, I have to say, all that I've heard from EMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, and other branches of the state government, they're very pleased with Situate's decisions and the progress that they're making along the coast. With the Beach Nourishment Grant, the Seawall Grant, this grant the seawall grant, this grant, and the elevation grants, all of those things play into, I think, the winning of this grant as well. And I think more to come.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great. All right, going to move on to the next agenda item. It's a discussion vote, Toll Brothers Development. The first item is sewer connection. The second item under this is, topic is water connection.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Bill Armberger. I'm here tonight with my partner Jeff Delisi with the Toll Brothers. We have our engineer Scott Mchely, Dave Buckley, and our regional president, Dave Bauer, and Kevin Klein, who's our sewer engineer, who back in the beginning of December gave a presentation, is also here with us tonight. With the board's pleasure, I won't reiterate what we did in the beginning of December. We'll answer any questions, or to the extent you want us to make any presentation, we'd be happy to do that. But in brief, what the proposal Toll Brothers, we've been working with several town boards to, the present plan is to try to build 90 residences on approximately 70 acres in the Hadley Road and Tilden Road area. As part of this, as we discussed last, it's kind of a unique opportunity for the town with certain water and sewer issues, in that the Toll Brothers plan to build all their own infrastructure inside the project, so that there will be no necessity for the town bonding or setting bediments for any of the sewer connections, that in fact, that they would pay the full sewer bediment, excuse me, the full sewer connection fee, along with any applicable water connection fees also. In that, as Kevin had in his report, this would enable the town, through INI work or otherwise, to increase the capacity for sewer flow, such that not only would it take care of this development, proposed development, but also to provide sewer tie-ins for a lot of residents that otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to do that. Since our last meeting, we've been working with certain town officials to determine some work which the Toll Brothers could do, and participate in for the benefit of the existing neighborhood, and also for the new proposed residences. The Toll Brothers are making a commitment to continue to work with the town to determine the appropriate public amenity for them to participate in and to work on, for the benefit of the town, the neighborhood, and the new residents of the area. And that's an ongoing discussion, which will, they're making a commitment to participate in by work, financially and otherwise, to benefit the neighborhood. And so, at this point, Kevin can answer any questions relating to that, on the water and sewer. But as we've discussed before, this is an essential element. We've already had our wetlands resource delineation by Conservation, and we're ready to work with the town consultant, the town officials, to move forward on this project, and do a lot of engineering to address all the issues that the town, the consultants, and the neighbors would have related to. So it's a lot of work to be done here, but this is sort of the first tangible step that allows us to go forward in that.
So just so people understand, so you're here before us for obviously the sewer and the water, but ultimately, you're going to be applying with subdivision plans through the planning board?
Correct.
To go through Conservation also, I guess?
Yes.
And then address the issues with the streeting and everything else?
Absolutely. All municipal, whatever municipal permits and approvals we need, we're going to go through all of them. And I understand that, along with some of the other, our own engineers and some of the other consulting services, that the town is engaging, and that we are going to pay for, for lack of a better word, kind of a master consultant to help. Town administrators have been very helpful in helping coordinate the various town department heads and boards to make this a process. It's a very transparent process, that everyone gets all the information out there. It's necessary, so that any issues or questions, we can answer.
And, correct me, I know you will, it's 91 homes that are being proposed?
Ninety homes.
Ninety homes. And the sewer fees will be paid? And I forgot to hook up, is it 15?
It's 14,000, which would be $1,260,000.
And then the water connection fee?
Is $6,500 per home.
All right. So the sum total between the 90 homes amounts to how much, the Draymond Burger?
It's close to $2 million.
All right. And then you've indicated that Toll Brothers is willing to work with some form of public benefit for the surrounding area?
Yes. And we've already had some conversations with town officials and certain members of the Board of Selectmen, who's acting as liaison in that matter.
That's Tony?
Yep.
So everybody understands. Okay, good.
Just the only thing I noticed, that this is not a 40B. This is just a regular, just for people watching on TV, a regular project, 90 homes. And there's a certain percentage of them that you have the right to hook onto anyways.
Yes.
The ones that are on have, probably a dozen or so of them are
Correct.
Are already in the right to hook it up. So it's the ones in the back side of the property that you're really looking for us to grant that to.
Questions from the board? Sean?
Just, I don't think it's come up before. I just want to make sure that the water mains would be looped. There shouldn't be any reason for any dead-end, you know, water lines like we have in some dead-end streets, so.
During the planning board process, the DPW has their requirements, and also the rules and regulations of subdivision control. And I just know in the past, working with this, working with Kevin and the other people, is whatever the DPW's standards and regulations are, we follow.
Good. Laura?
Thank you. What's your timeline, or projected timeline, for construction, should everything be approved? Is it three years, four years? What's a typical?
To build the roads, or to build all the homes?
All in.
And I'll let Dave speak to that, but I think typically, it all depends on how quickly homes sell and whatnot. But I think they're projecting it's a five-year project, give or take.
Dave Bauer with Toll Brothers. We're about five years, although we don't spec-build. We don't just go tell the market what they want. We let the customers come in and customize their homes. And so we really are slaves to the market from that standpoint. So five years is a rough estimate, but it's hard to predict. If all of a sudden, the market, you know, wakes up, and there's a big demand, it could be faster. If it needs to be slower, we'll do what the market tells us to do there.
Okay.
So we'll try and work methodically through the community and complete sections of it, you know, hopefully, so that we're not coming back in to build a home in a certain part of the community after, you know, the area's been built out.
And contingent upon approval, are you open to paying those sewer fees in phases in order to help us mitigate some of the capacity through INI continued work, or enhancements to our pump station and things that are needed?
Yes.
Okay.
Mar?
Mara, pretty much asked the question that I wanted to ask, but for the most part, I was just trying to, for people watching, as far as, you know, everybody's hearing our capacity, where it's at and everything. But you touched on some interesting numbers when you were here before, as far as what we could, with us going back in and taking care of INI, what was the percentage? Do you remember roughly, what we could pick up? What those numbers were, Kevin?
Yeah, your capacity, your treatment plant is permitted for 1.6 million gallons per day.
Yeah, that was what I was looking for.
You're currently at about 1.2 million gallons a day, which leaves you at 400,000.
Yeah.
But you're in the middle of a six-phase sewer extension project, which will use about 600,000.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 400,000. So you still need to remove INI, and we estimate that you've probably got about a half a million gallons a day of II in there. Based on your past performance, the 1.2 million dollars, at about $6 a gallon, equates to about 200,000 gallons a day of II that can be removed.
Okay.
And this project will require an estimate, an estimate of 22,487 gallons a day.
Okay. Yeah, those are the numbers I was looking for. So thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mara?
I just wanted to share with the board that I also reached out as a liaison to the Water Resources Committee. And they didn't have any issues with adding the development into, with our water issues as well that we have here. We have plenty of room for additional population to be added to that, too. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. That's also.
Questions from the audience? Yes, I forgot you. That's right. Sir, could you tell me your name and your address, please?
My name's Michael Kinahan. I live at 287 Tilden Road, so I will be a neighbor to the proposed development. I've lived there about, close to 17 years. We're on, currently on septic. We've heard that, you know, we're supposedly going to get town sewer connected to our development, sort of pushing states area. We have a public leach and field that actually goes across my property. That's never happened. Again, having been a member of the community for 17 years, you know, I think it's a little bit unfair, to say the least, that these gentlemen who are, you know, in numbers here today, have never been in this community before, don't have an active role in the community, you come in here with this proposal to, you know, build out this development and get access to the sewer. So, A, I think it's unfair. The bigger issue I have is also with the water pressure. I mean, as you know, that the water pressure in town's not necessarily great all over town. Tilden Road, particularly, four, for a number of years, just recently, has been upgraded and somewhat improved, although I wouldn't say fantastic. And I do wonder about the added strain of these 90 homes here, and what that means. And although they suggest that they want to be magnanimous and help the town out, be involved in bediments, I would propose that the selectmen require them to have a significant bond, such that if and when this development is done, if there are issues with water on Tilden Road and other places that are affected by this, that we actually have the money in hand to remedy the situation, and not have to chase Toll Brothers into large corporations with low lawyers and deep pockets. So, again, I would propose that this development has a septic system, like many other developments in town, a shared septic, however they want to do it. And on the water, I would propose a significant bond to mitigate risks to the town.
With the bond, I can address that. That'll be required by the planning board to make sure they ensure that it's going to be completed, one way or the other. And I know that's a part of the process that they'll require. And I'm sure it will be a steep bond to make sure they conform to the plan that's approved.
With the water?
Water pressure, I was just gonna, or me or Kevin, if I'm misspoken, Kevin, and Fire Chief Murphy's behind you, that before they can do a project like this, I think they have to do pressure tests. And if the pressure's not good enough, I think it's on them to make it proper. And this gallons per minute, or it's PSI, I'm not sure. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, there was a project up the street from you that might have fallen into this category by CM Tilden's estate. And they not only did the project, but ran a new line from Beaver Dam down to the project, to not only increase the water pressure for their project, but for the neighbors as well. So Kevin, or, you know, Chief Murphy, if I'm misspoken, you know, correct me, but I thought that's how it went.
Kevin?
There are fire flow tests that go on prior to the project to make sure that it goes. We just replaced the water line on Hadley, and we replaced a bunch of water line on Tilden, so.
But, but to his point, he shouldn't suffer, you know, any, you know, if his pressure is 40 PSI, when the rest of us are at 60, he shouldn't suffer and go down to 32 or something like that. And this, there's a mechanism in place that will, you'll see to it that this won't happen, right?
We would watch that, to make sure that the pressure level didn't go down below an acceptable level. It should not only not go down below an acceptable level, but it should also be, you know, brought up to the level that's, you know, the highest level possible, you know, not further strain the system. I think people that are already residents of the town should, you know, I think it first gives it maximum pressure. It kind of depends where you are in town, if you're at a higher or lower location on that. If you are having a water pressure problem, you can contact the Water Department, we can go out and test it. Sometimes it could be something as easy as a water service heading over to your house, it could have corrosion, and it's not allowing full flow, parts restricting flow. But that's something that can be discussed with the Water Department. I'm not aware of anything, maybe Chief Murphy is, but I'm not aware of any particular low flows over there in Tilden app. But it's something we can check out, fire.
Most of the coastline, the water pressure's very good. If you do have a challenge, you could have actually multiple loops coming in. If you have low pressure, bring another, bring in the line, and be happy to increase that pressure. But the most part, number of the water, it's very good.
Other questions? Anybody else here for the, Ms. Burbine?
Anne Burbine, in Chris Road. Does this bump others in line for sewer?
I mean, that's kind of what I was gonna, go ahead. The only thing I was gonna say is that with this project, nobody is not getting, there's no one coming out of line because this project's going in there. In fact, what's going to end up happening over a certain number of years, is there's going to be capacity for more people on the back end. I think the question that Anne has is, the board hasn't decided what the next project is going to be yet. And that's what we have to reevaluate, and that we're in the process of now deciding, where is the next project? Is it in your areas, in this area, is it in North Situate? You know, where is that going to be? But there's not like, there's four projects ahead, and this one's coming out, so this one can get in there. Just to make, you know, make sure that everyone's aware of that. And...
By its very nature, sorry, by the very nature, you are, in fact, moving these people to the front of the queue.
Actually, not at all, because there's, the next, the next step isn't even in, you know, in development yet. So they're having to go in and get capacity that's already there. We're not even building, you know, usage for them, because the pipes are already there. They're just hooking in. And the board has got to decide what the next project is going to be, and the projects after that. So I see how you could see it that way, but that's not what, in fact, is happening. They're hooking into an existing thing, they're going to create more capacity, this can actually end somebody else, allow them to get to the back of the line, so that we get more people on sewer in the long run. And I think part of the thing, Mike, you know, I know that you're interested, but a lot of people come up to us and also say, we don't want sewer. So, you know, that's a lot of stuff that we have to take into consideration in terms of where the next project goes. A lot of people say, you know, I don't want a 20, my septic's worth a fine right now, and I don't want a $20,000 bill to deal with over the next 20 years. So, you know, so those are the types of things that we have to weigh as we look into the next projects and the next phases for the capacity of the sewer system.
So I think the short answer is, it seems like they're being leapfrogged. The answer is, they are getting in if we prove it. However, we're not necessarily taking away the opportunity for expansion, because right now, if they weren't being intervening into the sewer, we are going to be looking at the next phase. And there is another phase, another neighborhood. Issue that Tony's talking about is, do we want to do that phase, or do we go to the following phase? Because that's another issue that's going to have to be vetted between the next phase and the subsequent one. Ideally, it's a neighborhood in North Situate. People in North Situate wants to, we're up there because of the downtown, to improve it, to make it better. People in the neighborhood are going to probably say, I want it there. And they're the next phase. So that's the next hot-button issue that we, as a board, are going to be confronted with. But it will not affect our next phasing in. And ultimately, by doing this with the INI, it's going to actually allow us maybe to do both. That's the, the, other questions on this? Kevin?
I had a question just towards, I guess I'll address it to Kevin. It'll be easy. Have you guys come up with preliminary designs for what you'd do for the sewage, and how it would come out, and how it would get to our next pump station, so on and so forth? And if you have, because we haven't seen any designs on our end, is our infrastructure in place? Have you checked our infrastructure at all? That it is in good shape and can handle that added capacity? Because I think you're adding about 22,500 gallons per day.
I have not done any sewer designs yet, starting with preliminary subdivision layouts, but I have not done the sewer designs yet. When I, when we first looked at this, we looked at the pump station, which ultimately, you're going to need a third pump in there. That was intended early on, that to get the full capacity, you need to put a third pump in. And then parts of the system may go gravity, and the gravity lines were deemed to be adequate at the time. But once it gets actually designed, and figure out where the flow's going to go, and where it's going to enter your system, we'd have to look downstream of that, at each point.
Because that'd be my one concern, that we do look downstream after
At least two.
After everything's all settled. And if there are upgrades that need to be made, they're made towards the project, and, you know, come out of that, as opposed to coming out of the pool of funds and everything.
One thing, is it Kevin, or Scott?
Yes.
One thing, Kevin, that you might want to look sooner than later, because the water just went in this past fall on Hadley Road. Presumably, it's going to be reasphalated in the summer or in the fall. Then there's a five-year moratorium on the road. So there's no digging up any sewer pipes, if it turns out that you guys need to increase your capacity, because that's going to be on you folks, I assume, with sewer, because we're not touching it. It has to go down Hadley Road to make it better. So you might want to look at that sooner than later. Because there is a five-year moratorium on the road being redone, right?
And our plan was not to redevelop the whole road. The road, the road probably could use some drainage updates and some other stuff. So instead of just paving it over, what we do is, we're going to completely repair all the patchwork, and bring it up to a better road, but we're not going to do a full repave on it.
To be honest with you, Kevin, I'm going to have another, a meeting, another discussion. To be honest with you, Kevin, I'm gonna have another, a meeting, another discussion because I've been going up and down that road and I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm advocating for a new road. It's in pretty bad shape. And to be candid with you, you can pass one half of it, it'll be nice, but people are gonna be running on the other half. But that's another discussion for another day. Any other questions? Yes?
Couple of questions and comments. Sean Conner, 132 Tilden Road. Couple of things. First of all, the five-year plan, so I live right across from, Sean, I think you just mentioned Tilden Estates there, Sam Tilden Estates. Got 16 homes in there and I swear it took them nine years to build 16 homes. So, five years might be a little bit aggressive. Of course, 2008, in fairness, happened in the middle of that. So, stepping back a little bit on the whole thing, for this sewer, is this a, is this a turning point for this whole development? Is it happening or is this just another step along the way? Or where are we in the big picture? If we could, sorry, I know we're, it's a little bit of a school trick there. Where are we in the big picture of the whole project?
I think where, I'll turn it over to the attorney, but the next thing is they're gonna be filing their formal application for subdivision plans under chapter 44. Basically, that they're going into the Gulston property, putting down the streets and getting approval through the planning board, who is the board that actually monitors and grants them the special permit to be able to build what they're proposing, the 90 homes. What they're looking for with us is, is the sewer capacity so that instead of doing septic systems, which I presume would change and alter their plans, this enables them to say, okay, this is exactly the plan we want, we've been working on for a past year or so, or what they've been working on. So, now they're gonna have to go through that process, which could probably take three, four months, because then they also have to go to conservation because they're wetlands. So, simultaneously, they'll apply at both. So, it's not over, but, you know, I think, you know, there'll be some permitting requirements that the planning board will initiate and put into their special permit. The way they did it with Walnut Hill and the way they've done it with some of the other subdivisions, the one you're talking about, Sam Tilden Estate, was a smaller subdivision plan with a smaller developer, but same situation. They go before the planning board to get the requisite permission to be able to build what was being proposed.
Yeah. So, do you guys know when you start to dig? All goes well according to your--
Do you have a schedule at all?
No, it just depends. We have to get all the municipal permits and approvals and it's gonna take more than, more than several months to do that.
Probably late this year, maybe the beginning of next year, somewhere around there.
Yeah. Thank you. And just, so, I think you guys kind of brought it up. So, our section to Tilden, as you mentioned, was where the water pipes put in and repaved. So, I'm in favor of North Situate jumping us in phases there for next on sewer. Off to mention, I just put in a septic.
I don't think, Sean, it's your area--
For all transparency, yeah.
Sean, I don't think you're the next phase. I may be wrong, I don't think you are.
I checked down here a couple of times and it's-- I don't think you get the right answer to it.
Any event. Any other questions from the audience? I'm just gonna comment on it. You know, I sat on the zoning board when there was a 40B that was filed. Went for a full year on this property. 250 units crammed into the upland, not the lower portion on the eastern side of Hadley Road. It was one of the worst application processes I had sat through because it was very contentious and the attorneys and the applicant were belligerent. Wasn't Toll Brothers. And they actually sought to tap into town sewer. They actually appealed the decision because the zoning board said, no, you can't, you have to put on on-septic sewer service package treatment plant. The entity that was appealed to was the Housing Appeals Committee, it's called the HAC. Appropriately named. They granted them the ability. The applicant decided not to go forward with the 250 condominium units. I have to tell you, sitting through that, I was amazed and I was, you know, very pleased that the applicant withdrew because of financial situations. I think it was 2007, right before the crash. So, looking at that, going through that and seeing that they're proposing homes, certainly it's a much better situation than the 250. Obviously, I'd love to have it as open space, fields, recreation, that's, to me, would be a better. But nonetheless, the property rights, people own it, they're trying to, the Gulstons are selling it, Toll Brothers are looking to purchase it, Toll Brothers is looking to put in homes the size of about 3,000 square foot, homes, I think, if I'm not mistaken originally. So, they're not necessarily gigantic homes, they're much larger than my home, but I think from a town perspective, it's a benefit. It certainly is gonna raise issues, it'll have taxes that are good for us, it's gonna raise kids and more kids, I think that's good too. But ultimately, I think it's a benefit for the town to have it. So, as a result, I'm in favor of it. And I'm in favor of it because I also know that those people who are in the next phase are not gonna be deterred or gonna be shorted by that. They are, the next ones in line, in fact, as a result, it appears as though that we're gonna be able to maybe link the next two phases. And for those reasons, that's the reason why I'm supportive of it. But at least I want to put that out there so people can understand, because it's never easy to see land that's not developed but get developed. And obviously, at one point, it used to be a radio station and then it was textile for a number of years. And years before that, it was, it was an army base for the cavalry, I guess, or the artillery. Prior to that, it was just farmland. So, you can see over the course of years, things change, uses change. But I think this is a good use for the town.
That being said--
I just, I just think that's worth repeating though, John. I just, you know, that, two, two, is it Mike standing up in the back? No, that's what helped make, make me decide to look favorably on this development. So, what John said, and we saw it happen somewhere else on a much smaller development, if we said, no, we're not gonna allow you to tie into our town sewer system, the HAC can say, they have every right to, and furthermore, you're not gonna get the betterment fee. You're not gonna get the hookup fee. So, I just think that's important.
And I also say, I also saw on the zoning board where some people had gone in, not through us and not through the zoning board, but they had asked to build some homes. As a result, they weren't able to build the homes. And consequently, they came back with another 40B and the 40Bs just being completed off of--
Tilden.
Tilden Road. And frankly, I think it was like four or five houses they wanted. Instead, they've got 28 condos. So, I'm only saying that just to kind of inform people. It's a tough decision to sit up here and say, okay, we're gonna give them sewer, but I think there's a benefit for the town and ultimately, it's not gonna impact anybody in the future who's looking to get connected to town sewer.
I'm sorry, can I, one more comment?
One more, then you go, we gotta move on.
Yeah, I apologize.
That's all right.
Behind us on the agenda.
Okay.
You're absolutely right. They want, that was like a garden-style apartment, they called it, with parking underneath. So, point taken there. But, so, you mentioned like, at some point, betterment came up and I don't know if it was Selectman McNady, right, who's in that? So, were that things, to Mike's point, who lives much closer to the property, is there a process to understand that, you know, in one of the last means, I've been trying to keep up with this, but, I mean, we're talking about what does the streets look like, you know, are they gonna be in the light on Hadley or are they gonna put in a little park there? Are they gonna help us plan with the, how we're gonna have to redistrict the schools, right? Because, you know, Wapatack can't handle that. So, is there, what are the discussions, if they're all available or if we're even that far yet, to understand what some of that betterment for, what Toll Brothers are gonna do for the town?
The betterment, not for the sewer, just for the--
Not the betterment--
Yeah, a lot of that mitigation--
That they're gonna help out with.
Yeah, we're talking with different projects in the area that would impact not only the people that are moving in there, but the direct neighbors. Still really in the beginning stages of what it could be, but, you know, recreational things and safety type of things, what we're discussing. A lot of the mitigation for other things comes through just the regular process. So, this isn't, this isn't like a big thing. I can't imagine, you know, whatever mitigation the project deserves will happen through the planning board, through CONCOM and that sort of stuff. But the group is very interested in keeping the community happy and bettering the neighborhood and that's what we're working on.
Don't have specifics, but I can tell you right now, there will be a public benefit and they're willing to work with us. We're gonna be working a little bit. Don't forget, they're gonna go through planning and then ultimately, I think, we'll ultimately have to sign off if we're gonna approve it or not at some point. So, we'll be seeing them again.
Yeah, and we'll be having public discussions on, on those items too. It's just so preliminary right now in terms of it that it's not quite at that stage.
We're gonna circle back, they'll circle back.
Well, they seem like great guys, maybe they could work with us and add one septic.
All right. Thank you. Last comment. Let's move on. Is there a motion?
Move to grant the sewer hookups to Toll Brothers Development.
Motion by Mr. Vignani.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Toole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody saying nay?
Do you want to read that motion instead? Would you like that one read? I'm sorry, Toll.
Was there a official--
I think there might be a suggested one.
Sure. Well, let's rescind the last motion.
Rescind the last motion? Move to rescind the last motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani to rescind, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. All right. Move the board of selectmen to approve the request of Suburban Realty Trust to connect to town Situate sewer system in conjunction with the development of 90 homes at the 71 acres of land adjacent to Tilden Road, Hadley Road and Oceanside Drive that will be known as Seaside at Situate.
Second. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. O'Toole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Inadvisable.
One other last comment on the water. We don't, we don't generally vote for water hookups, but as Maura mentioned, there's no restriction on that. And I think if you just go to the water department, they give you your certification.
Yeah.
But there's no, there's no, like I said, restriction on the project due to water availability in town of Situate.
Yeah. Can I, can I ask one thing? Because over the period of five years, as long as it's and will work with the water department, do any applicable things, pay applicable fees, but is the water commissioner, I just want to make sure it's the consensus of the, of the water commissioners that will have adequate water to do this because we don't want to find out a few years down the road if, you know, there's always the specter of a large 40B project. We're in, we're gonna comply with all the town rules and regulations where they can't have the state tell you what to do. That's why I just want to make sure that no future 40B projects move ahead of us, that's all.
I don't know if we can do that. All I'd say, build it sooner than later because, as you know, the rumors of a 250 or 220 down on Booth Hill and then there's the one on Stock which it's been approved that they're building and, you know--
Right. So, but is it, and just from our standpoint, it's the consensus of the board though, just as we got the sewer, that the water is adequate water for the project.
Now--
Yes.
At this point, okay.
We'll work with the town administrator and with the water department on that. Hey, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Good luck. Okay, let's move on. We'll move on to what's been slated for 640, a presentation, the Fire Department study. Kent Green, the Senior Vice President of Emergency Servicing Consulting International, otherwise known as ECSI, is with us this evening. Mr. Green?
Future.
He's in the hall, he's gonna be coming in.
What are you doing right now?
Uh, stuff. I'm stuck.
Chief, good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Welcome back. We're doing the firefight?
Usually, I'm the one, yes. Yeah. And I said--
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
While the projector is opening up, I would like to, on behalf of BSCI, thank the board for allowing us to come in and work with the town of Situate. This is actually our second project with the town, the first being about 20 years ago. Probably sure most of you were not on the board at that time and I was not--
Sean.
BSCI either. Our company president, Jack Snook, worked that project and was glad to see us--
What was the project that you ran 20 years ago? Similar?
That is an excellent question. I'm assuming that it was some sort of staffing analysis, but during that time, I would, I would think that the department was growing somewhat, so--
Rich?
Yeah, it was regional, like, regionalization study.
Oh, regionalization.
Thank you.
Again, thanks you, thank you for allowing me to come and just go through this brief summary report. Unless there are objections, we will not go through it page by page, the 85 pages or so. And I promised to be done with my part by about nine o'clock, so you can get on with your--
Fair enough.
All right. Again, this is an overall, or overview of the project, which was intended to be a staffing management and financial analysis. The intent was to review the current management structure, the organizational structure of the Fire Department, look at staffing levels, look at how the department is dispatched, review service delivery, the most important component of any fire service delivery system, and then provide some cost estimates to any recommendations that we identified throughout the report. Just for comparisons, we always use NFPA, U.S. Fire Administration benchmark data. In this particular case, we also used a number of regional benchmarks that were provided by the town as, as had been used previously. As you can see there on the chart to the right, which is small based on screen size, those are the population for those comparable communities. So, we got a good range of some communities that were smaller, some that were larger, but we, it's impossible to get communities that are identical. Even with, if they're identical in size and population, they contain different risks, different services are provided. So, we try to look at a range of those comparable communities. Just as a summary, 17.07 square miles with a population of 18,100 roughly with three stations. Those are identified, the red crosses, the purple stations are other agencies that do provide services into Situate as does Situate provide services outside the town through mutual aid agreements. Services provided by your Fire Department, fire suppression, of course, ALS, ambulance transport, advanced life support, the highest level of ambulance transport, vehicle education, dive rescue and hazardous materials, as well as public education, fire life safety education, code enforcement and those sorts of things that are critical to the function of the Fire Department. Just as a basis of organizational overview, we looked at governance and lines of authority, how the agency is founded, how, what policy documents-- Okay. What policy documents are in place that allow the department to operate? Of course, it is an organization within the overall governance of the town of Situate. We did provide one recommendation on the lines of authority because the Fire Department is also tasked with providing emergency management. And based on some of the staffing levels within the department, we felt that perhaps that responsibility may be best suited in another organization within its town structure. Not sure what's going on with the screen there.
Yes, he's gonna get him. Yes, he's gonna get him.
I'll keep going, I'll just talk. How's that? Policy documents also, we just recommended a general update and review of those. There's plenty of standard documents out there available commercially. Each, of course, has to be tailored, specific to the organization, but there are a good list of what topics should be included in a policy document. So, those are out there and available. Organizational structure is common for a Fire Department this size with a Fire Chief and a Deputy Chief that oversees the operations or assists the Chief in overseeing the operations. And then the department is divided into four groups that provide 24-hour coverage across the three stations, as we already mentioned. We looked at funding, fees and taxation as a component of this to find out how efficient the department was and the use of the tax dollars within the organization. Over the past five years, the department has seen a relatively slow increase in overall department budget. The past three years, if it had not been for some capital expenditures, the budget would have been relatively flat. In comparison to regional and Commonwealth benchmarks, the department is a little higher on a per capita cost, but again, those per capita numbers that are provided through the benchmarks are based purely on budget compared to population, does not take into consideration risk or services provided. So, what we did there as well was provide an overall benchmark with those comparable communities, since the benchmark data that is provided through national and other benchmarks is strictly on population.
Just on that point, maybe Chief, you can, why would Hall have a more, higher, I guess it was cost per capita? Just, if you knew at all, I'm just curious. I know Cohasset is too, I just assume it's the size.
Probably there's less people, you can only have, probably have a couple engines down the hall, a lot of, you have to have at least facilities and that rest to fight a fire. House fires, just as we do, we have a lot less population, so the cost is going to be higher.
Right.
Ours is more spread out, and the challenge to us, as far as a lot of the benchmarks you're going to see, is Hummerock. And Hummerock is 20% of my budget, and it's 5% of my service. So, if you look at a lot of these grants, a lot of these graphs we're going to go through, that's the big difference, is the geographic placement of Hummerock. It's vital to have a department down there, to have two firefighters in that station open at all times, but it does offset some of these schematics we go through. It's 5% of my calls and 20% of my budget.
And that's a good point, and we will talk about that in service delivery, how the geography of the response area is problematic. We'll get to that in just a moment. We also looked at staffing, personnel management, looked at the policy, rules, regulations, labor management relationships, provided some guidance there through the Town Administrator, and as well as the Chief, as how they can be more involved in the labor management relationship, involved discussions on a routine basis, so that the lines of communication are kept open as much as possible. We also looked at application recruitment and retention, which is always difficult for small fire departments, and then testing, measurement, and promotions, making sure that the Fire Department was following a formal process to ensure that the most appropriate and best qualified candidates were being moved up the career ladder. From an administrative and staff, and support staffing perspective, the department is relatively small. There are only seven and a half FTEs, four and a half of which are dispatchers within the organization. So, those are not individuals tasked with administrative responsibilities, but because they are part of the Fire Department, they're included in the support complement within the organization.
FTEs are full-time employees?
Full-time equivalents.
Just so people understand.
Correct, I apologize.
That's okay, that's all right.
From an operational staffing perspective, there's 45, and again, we've been working on this project, I believe we started in November of 2013. So, some of these numbers may have changed, and we've been working with the Town Administrator, getting through some of the red tape that's typical in scheduling with busy Board members. But again, some of the numbers may have changed since the document was actually put together, but as of the time the data was collected, 45 operational personnel, including captains, lieutenants, and all the firefighting personnel. From a benchmark comparison, again, we're talking about benchmarks, Situate has a slightly higher level of personnel, operational personnel, per 1,000 population. The national median is one person, one career firefighter, per 1,000 people. Situate's at 2.43, but again, you've got that geographical oddity that has to be taken into consideration when deploying personnel throughout the response area.
What is the state one?
The Commonwealth is 1.67, so right in between where the national and the department is here locally.
So, they don't take everything into account, some towns have called firefighters, some towns don't do EMS?
Correct.
Some towns just do BLS. So, there's a lot of variables in those numbers. It's a generalization, so if you took all towns that serve both ambulance services and firefighting, they'd be a lot closer.
Correct. Good point, Chief. We also looked at staff allocation. Right now, you have, at the time data was collected, two personnel at the north station here beside Town Hall, two people at Hummerock, and then four people at your Station 1, is that correct? Five there. From a staffing perspective, the department is doing incredibly well at producing personnel to mitigate house fires. Still below the level as would be recommended by the Centers for Public Safety Excellence Accrediting Agency for fire departments, but in 2012, they were able to generate, on average, 10 and a half personnel per structure fire. Now, from that count, a moment ago, five people, two and two, doesn't equal 10 and a half, so they are relying some on callback of full-time personnel to assist, and that doesn't include the numbers of personnel that are arriving from apparatus from mutual aid departments as well. But they do have the ability to generate staff from within their own organization, still slightly below what the recommendations would be nationally.
Tony?
Just a quick question. Chief, you brought up a good point a second ago, which is, you know, we look at these numbers and they look skewed, and we're all aware of Hummerock. What communities would you say offer the same services as us, so that when we look at some of these charts, we can say, okay, Hanover's really the best comparison, or these other two or three communities that do ambulance and EMS, and, I mean, nobody will really have the Hummerock issue that we have, but at least a better comparison?
Most of the towns around us, Hall, Cohasset, Marshfield, I would say Hingham is a good comparison to us, they have 22,000 for a population, and, you know, they're very comparable to the size of our department, maybe a little bit larger. Marshfield is a good comparison. Most of the smaller towns all do ambulance service around here. It's when you get to the bigger towns like Wamuth and Braintree, you get Quincy, some of the big, like Rockland, they don't do, they're, it's a little bit overwhelming, but a lot of those big towns now are looking to try to find a way to get into EMS, because it's cost-effective. You get firefighters across, trainers, paramedics, so you get two for one, and that's what all these coastal towns have done, you know, we're all cross-trained, we have 22 paramedics now, three more in school, just started the academy today, so 25 paramedics, all cross-trained as firefighters, so you get a lot better bang for your buck.
So, the comparisons that we're doing, when we look at Cohasset, Duxbury, Bridgewater, Hanover, Hingham, Kingston, Marshfield, Rockland, Stoughton, and Whitman, are all good comparisons, they do what we do, but when we look at the national things and some of the state things, there's going to be some wiggle room?
If you go out to the western part of the state, as you know better than I, it's a lot of call. Sometimes you'll have two guys just on an ambulance during the day, and that's, it's basically, it's risk benefit, you know? We, most of the towns around here that had call service are now going away from it. They're trying to hire more personnel onboard, and the EMS capacity right now, we are increasing our calls by about 1.8% a year, according to your studies, so, you know, over five years, we're getting 10% more calls, and, you know, obviously, with the baby boom of EMS, it's expected to explode in the next 10 years.
Chief, can you explain call service for people, what they understand?
Call service, call firefighters, voluntary firefighters, paid only when they work. They do have some training, and there's still some towns around that do some call firefighters, I think Duxbury does, Hanover does, Cohasset has a few, I don't think Marshfield has anymore, but, you know, 25 years ago, Situate had them, there was a lot more call firefighters around, but it's basically, people are working at different places now, not everybody's working on the pickup truck in town anymore, and being available. So, there's also liability with that, if somebody gets hurt, you own them.
Correct. Thanks. One of the biggest things that we were tasked with looking at was the increase in overtime utilization over the past five to six years. There's lots of information in the document that details what we did in the analysis regarding the overtime utilization. We also provided some strategies that could alleviate, or at least mitigate, some of that cost through the utilization of some alternative staffing patterns, which we'll talk about shortly. We looked at facilities and apparatus. From a benchmark perspective, again, three stations would be appropriate for this population within this region. There's an adequate number of engines or pumpers, and there's an adequate number of aerial apparatus. We did provide some capital replacement planning recommendations regarding maybe reducing some of the engines because of the high maintenance costs in some of those, but at the same time, allowing the town to properly plan for the purchase and replacement of these very expensive pieces of equipment that are vital to the operations of the organization. From a service demand perspective, we looked at a, basically, 10 to 11-year period from 2001 to 2012, service demand is increasing. That's the historical trend, that's expected to continue into the near future, because, as partly the Chief mentioned, the aging population of the community, as well as the change in the healthcare environment, where people are now using EMS as their entryway into the healthcare system. We looked at calls by service type. Fires, of course, are the most, are the least common of any call types. EMS or medical transports are the highest volume, and then the all-inclusive other category, which is alarms, flooded basements, CO alarms, child with his hand stuck in a vending machine, every other sort of call that the Fire Department has taken ownership of and now responds to on a daily basis. We did a temporal analysis of service demand as well, meaning by time of day, we looked at it by day of week, by month of year. No real trends in those two, but from an hour of day perspective, exactly what we expected to find, where is the call volume begins to uptick about 6:00 or 7:00 a.m., peaks during the midday hours, and then tails off into the evening. Now, in a system that only provides fire suppression and rescue type calls, not medical first response or medical transport, you would not see that uptick in service demand. We provided a separate chart within the document, and I wish you could see it on the screen tonight, but service demand for fires is relatively low and flat across all time periods of the day, whereas the EMS service demand follows that general trend of upticking about 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, generally following human activity. People don't usually fall and get hurt when they're asleep at home. So, if, again, a department that provides emergency medical services is exactly the kind of service demand trend we would expect to see based on hour of day. From a geographical perspective, we plotted all of the incident data, the historical data that the Fire Department provided us, we were able to plot that against where their stations were deployed. Most of the heaviest areas of service demand are centered right around the two stations up here, and then another pocket on Hummerock. As the Chief alluded to, only 5% of the workload, but it is a necessary station, because service demand is occurring there. If that station were not in place, it would be a very long response time from one of these stations, or from a mutual aid department nearby. From a distribution perspective, we ran models based on a four-minute travel model and an eight-minute travel model from the existing stations, although the coverage is pretty poor from four minutes perspective, only at 41.6%, if that travel model's extended to eight minutes, it's at 83%. 90 percentile is the typical measure for the national benchmarks, but that's left up to the local jurisdiction to decide. Number one, what level of service do your residents and citizens expect? What level of service are they able to pay for, and what level of service are they willing to pay for? So, any system can be defined and developed to meet the nationally identified and published standards, but it's very difficult for most fire departments to meet that standard. So, it's left up to local jurisdiction, in concert with your appointed subject matter experts, to determine what level of service and what level of response performance is adequate for the town of Situate. In regards to that, however, as we'll talk about in a moment, the response performance, actual response performance is extremely good for the geography that has to be covered, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. We also looked at reliability of the organization, which means how often are simultaneous incidents occurring, which could draw down the workload and effectiveness of the organization. We'd like to see two simultaneous incidents occurring less than 10% of the time. In your case, you're at 16.3. So, a little higher than what we would expect, and we addressed some strategies within the later portions of the document to help offset that with some additional rescue staffing or medic staffing, because that's where the majority of your workload's occurring. Most of your secondary calls are medical in nature, not two fires at the same time. From a response performance perspective, we wanted to look at it from three perspectives. Call processing, which is the amount of time the dispatch center takes to take the information and dispatch the proper resources. Turnout time, the time between when the apparatus get the call and they're actually en route to the incident, and then total response performance is dispatch to arrival on scene. Because of the lack of data from your particular computer automated dispatch system, or lack thereof, call processing and turnout time was not able to be analyzed. However, from a dispatch to arrival perspective, when we measure it from the average, you're at four minutes and 25 seconds on average, or seven minutes at the 90th percentile. For the national standard, five minutes, or five minutes and 20 seconds at the national, at the 90th percentile would be the recommended level, but again, that's not considering the geography that has to be covered by the Situate Fire Department. So, we feel, based on our analysis and comparison to other studies that we've done in the past, based on the geography and the services provided, that the Situate Fire Department's providing an excellent level of service and an excellent response performance level. We did an assessment on dispatch. Now, we understand that there's some movement in changing the way that potentially dispatch services are handled within the town of Situate. We looked at just how the Fire Department handles the dispatching of incidents. When we did the data collection, a 911 call, or even a seven-digit call would come into the police department, it would be transferred to the Fire Department for dispatch. They would either call on the radio, or otherwise notify the appropriate units to respond. So, there is no computer-aided model in, that they're using within the Fire Department to track their response times and performance, other than by writing them on paper. Very traditional Fire Department, lots of history and lots of pride, but there are lots of ways that this data can be used as the department continues to grow and progress that could be used in the future to assist with planning and quality assurance, making sure that the services are being delivered at the expectations of the community and the policymakers. From the staffing strategies perspective, we offered up a number of strategies in the document to reduce costs and reduce the redundancy and increase the efficiency of the organization. There's a couple of charts that show how we came to some of those conclusions. One of those was the peak demand ambulance model, which is a non-traditional Fire Department model. As we talked about, your service demand for medical responses is between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. A peak demand ambulance model would place additional personnel on duty just for those hours of the day, rather than the traditional 24/7 model that is currently in place within the Fire Department. That's a bargaining issue, it's something that would need to be worked out between the policymakers, administrator, and the Fire Department, and the bargaining unit, but we've seen it successfully implemented in a number of departments across the country as a way to provide additional service, but without greatly increasing cost of the services that are being provided. We also suggested that the Fire Department look, working with the policymakers, at a dedicated training officer, to ensure that training is provided to all of the staff within the organization, both from a fire perspective and a medical perspective, and to ensure that that training is delivered in a formal, consistent way across the organization. We looked at cost avoidance options. One of the methods that has been successfully implemented in other departments is the utilization of part-time personnel. While that's not a common model in the northeastern U.S., it is quite common in some of the southern states, as well as the western states, that are predominantly district, special district organizations, but some career municipal departments have successfully implemented part-time personnel. They're cheaper, you don't have to benefit obligations that go along with those, but there's a cultural obstacle that would have to be overcome within this organization, as well as many others across the country. Cost recovery options, your service is already charging for services delivered primarily EMS. The recommendation there is to keep up with the Centers for Medicaid/Medicaid Services, Medicare/Medicaid Services, and ensure that the rates that are charged today are adequate to cover costs as much as possible. EMS was never intended, especially from an emergency delivery side, to be a profit-making business. It is a government service in most cases, and the best that you can hope for in most circumstances is that you recover a lot of the revenue, or the cost or expenditures of that service, but actually being profitable would be a very difficult venture, and very few government organizations that do bill for transport services actually achieve profitability from it. Overall findings and recommendations, your department is operating at a pretty high level, given their limited resources from a staff perspective and the geography, the separation that they're experiencing with the Hummerock station. Understand that the public safety building, which I hear might become a reality, will certainly help with some of the distribution aspects and the concentration ability of the organization. Response times are increasing, but not at a fault of the Fire Department, but because service demand is increasing. So, as those simultaneous calls continue to increase, less and less units will be available. That should be addressed as soon as possible. Overall, 19 recommendations that were provided, not to identify deficiencies, but rather to highlight areas where efficiencies could be obtained and improve overall effectiveness. That is a very brief summarization of a detailed analytical report. I will be glad to field any questions, and would defer to the Chief for any additional comments.
Questions, what?
Well, I read the book Cover to Cover, I found it very interesting, but you kept, I mean, we kept going back on the second ambulance especially, it's so important to have the second ambulance running, and then I've noticed, obviously, the most revenue would be generated through charges for ambulance transportation. So, I mean, those are two big points that I've took out of this. That's all, just a comment.
But, you've seen very few governments that profit from the ambulance, is that what you said here correctly?
It has been difficult, because most patients, I won't say most, in most, say it again, in a lot of situations, those individuals who are using EMS as their entryway into the healthcare systems are indigent or Medicare/Medicaid recipients. Those do not, you can charge $650, but you may get $300.
Okay.
Whereas private insurance, the more affluent communities, those with health insurance would see a larger revenue stream. So, it is really based on the demographics of your community and how you set your rates up, and all of that is changing with the Affordable Care Act, where we're struggling, along with every other entity in the country right now, trying to figure out how that will impact public service, emergency medical services, and what the fact that these individuals that previously did not have insurance, now they do, will they still call EMS for the transport, or will they seek a private care physician? So, there could be good and bad impacts to the EMS system nationwide due to the Affordable Care Act, but that remains to be seen at this point.
All right. On that point, I noted that the recommendation is that, given the peak demand between 6:00 and 3:00, that a recommendation would be, if it were possible, to have higher two EMS paramedic.
It would take, for seven day weeks, staffing over that time would take four slots, and we usually calculated a 1.25 per position to account for... calculated a 1.25 per position to account for benefit leave and absences. So, basically, five positions to cover 12-hour slots, seven days a week.
And if we were to do it the way that we're doing now, the 24 period, well, whatever, three, is it 24, it would be eight? Is that what I was reading?
If we did 24 hours a day, but peak demand during daytime is also another option, just days, using the current personnel with overtime. Overtime's a full word, but it could be more cost-effective to do it that way. There are several options we're looking at right now, but we are definitely looking at a way to find the ambulance running at least during the day, peak demand, two full-time rescues. And obviously, the passing of the public safety complex will allow us to spread our resources out, because currently, we talked about plenty of times during these presentations that, right now, the far-reaching areas of the west end, it's 11 minutes for an ambulance coming out of headquarters. Way too long. So, we need, the demand is coming out for a second ambulance, and also the location of that station's going to be, improve our service, you know, much improved.
Because I was focused when I was reading through this, the second ambulance. So, in other words, chief, to run the second ambulance full-time, based on the report, am I hearing that it's another eight positions, or?
If we ran it 24 hours a day.
24-hour a day. Okay, so, we'd need to hire eight more firefighters or paramedics to do it. Okay. As opposed to running it during the peak demand, which would be 12 hours, is that what it was?
Ten-hour days.
Ten-hour days. And that would be Monday through Friday, would that be?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
There's no real difference between the weekends.
That's what I noticed.
As far as the report comes.
So, that would mean five paramedics that we should?
If we did it just during the day.
Accounting for that 0.25 for benefit leaving things, yes, it would be five FTEs to fill four positions.
With benefits, it's one person, is 1.25 the cost, basically, because 25% of that, although put in 2.5 would be the benefits, time off, insurance, et cetera.
That assumes that the current complement, right?
Correct.
So, if the firefighters that we have now are basic EMTs and should separate from the town through retirement, and they all are required to be paramedics, those numbers would change then, because it's on the current complement, of which we don't have every firefighter being a paramedic.
Correct.
I noticed that. There are 12 that aren't, just firefighters, and then I forgot the other one, but my-
You still need the personnel to do it.
Right. My concern is to make sure that we have the personnel to run, because what happens if somebody in the west end says, geez, I need an emergency, it's 11 o'clock at night or midnight, they're having a heart attack. I'm concerned only because if it's the second ambulance, and we're doing the 12-hour shifts, and it's out of that time period, they're going to be getting it from headquarters, which puts us back into that 11-minute dilemma, which is a concern. That's all.
And that's one of the reasons that we do the temporal analysis. There are, of course, the outliers that will occur outside the norm from what our analysis shows, but that is a decision of what level of risk is the town willing to take versus the benefit of adding the additional unit to cover the highest or busiest service demand periods.
As Ken mentioned, we do have multiple calls. It's about one in five calls or multiple calls, and that number's going up, and that's part of the reason the service time has increased a little bit, because we're getting, you know, not one medical at a time, we're getting two, or we get a car accident, medical, I mean, these guys constantly going from one scene to another. And, you know, to run a second ambulance, our personnel have to be in the station, there, ready to go, take off the ladder right now, take off the engine. If we're out in the scene right now, it doesn't happen, we have to call mutual aid, it's our only choice. So, having the two ambulances full-time at least during the day is vital for our service.
Question, name, address?
Eric Shea, 14 Ocho Road, and president of the firefighters union.
Is this related to the question that's pending?
It is.
Go ahead, Mr. Shea.
I just want to offer a comment that we've had staffing at 12 per group in the past, and it allows us to run two ambulances. There are some currently, some staffing transitions with people in the academy, as well as vacancies, but, you know, that's been the benchmark in the past.
Thank you. Maura?
Yes, in your opinion, you also mentioned in the report that staffing software would help us to mitigate this, because I definitely summarized from everything that Rescue Two definitely needs to be manned. Is there different configurations with that, within our existing FTEs that could be modified to staff that Rescue Two, or is it definitely we need to add personnel in order to man that?
I think the most effective method would be to add the personnel. You still have a static fire risk. You still have fires, you still have structured fires. The fact that your EMS workload is increasing suggests that the need for personnel is on the medical side, but if you simply reallocate existing personnel to that unit, you deplete your fire suppression resources, to the point to where, now that both of these units are tied up, available personnel are not sufficient to at least put an initial attack on a structured fire, or any other type of fire for that matter. Right now, at Station One, if you have two medical calls, you're effectively down to your administrative staff to respond, whereas, right now, you have two additional people at each of your outlawing stations, and if you reallocated some of those, you further reduce your resources.
Okay, thank you.
Could be done by hiring, or it could be done with overtime, and that's the kick back and forth, what's most cost-effective?
Rick Johnson, 44 Situate Trail, member of the union. I just want to make a point, that we are running a second ambulance now.
Okay.
We're running it, but we're removing people from suppression pieces over to run the second ambulance. The other night, they had a cardiac arrest, five guys went in the ambulance. You only had five guys on duty in Situate. The ladder truck was out of service, and two engines had one guy on. So, I think the misnomer is that we're not running a second ambulance unless we get the manpower, but we are, but we're taking people off suppression trucks and reducing the manpower at that time.
That's correct. That's what we said earlier, that's correct. Well, that's the way we're running it now. We want to make sure, like I said, if they're not in the station, that does not work. So, we want to make sure if we can run them two full-time, at least peak demand, and start with that. I think it's, we have to provide that service with doing five, too much mutual aid incoming, and, you know, there is a return, it's not a moneymaker, but there is a return on the EMS side of it.
Oh, I see the value of it. I mean, I'm a big proponent of the second ambulance, and like I said, I'm a, in the future, maybe even a third.
Oh, without a doubt.
Let me tell you, if I were to call, asking for that second ambulance, I'd rather come from Situate than expect Norwell or Hummer Rock, no Hummer Rock. I'd take Hummer Rock, too. Hall or Hingham, when they're trying to find it, I mean, hey, so, I'd be very happy to get an ambulance from Situate to do it. So, I see that huge value of it. And here's my take on it, I don't care if it's a loser. If you're taking the call, you want it, and that's the bottom line. We're hoping to make it profit on it, only to defer the cost, because obviously, the cost for fire, it's a cost for emergency services, but regardless, it's, that's the service the town provides, health and safety. That's what we have to do. We have to ensure it. It's not a business. We're not here to make money to be able to show our shareholders that we're making profits, but we're trying to make it profitable, because people are very upset and trying to demand because of the taxes and all this other stuff, but I think all of us are aware of that. So, I mean, we talk about it, but believe me, chief, I'm 100% with you on that. We're going to try to do the best we can, but that's not the sole purpose.
And there's not, you know, a big part of money, I understand that. So, we're trying to find the most effective, efficient way to do this.
So, yeah, I think it's good to know that, you know, we're doing a lot of things now. When the budget starts on July 1, it's for 12 firefighters on a shift, and what changes that over the course of the year, usually towards the latter part of the fiscal year, is how much of overtime is used to fill vacation and actual incidents where we need extra personnel, or sick leave, or other utilization that's above what we project or above the average that we expect. So, we staff for 12 July 1 every year, and then later in the year, depending on all these varying factors, that's when we have situations where we're pulling as rich as people from suppression or whatever. So, it varies every single year, because the overtime, while the overall, according to this study, the overall fire budget has remained flat, the overtime budget has increased exponentially in the last three years.
Yeah, that's the budget buster on it.
But, that's a factor of the terrible storms that we've had, the number of incidents that are increasing, over, above-average utilization of compensated absences that may be an aberration for that year, so it's many different factors, but we staff to do the second ambulance July 1, and then it changes.
And just so people understand, because I'm looking at the historic overtime budget as compared to usage, we, you do, you do every year, since 2009 to 2010, somewhere at 350 is what we budgeted, and we ended up going close to 500, and the next year, it was a little under 400, and went up to 500. So, in other words, we've been going along.
Increase the overtime budget every year.
So, the people understand that you're trying to manage this and deal with it, it's just sometimes the circumstances are what they are, and OT happens.
A big part of that, John, is vacancies, just like any other vacancy, have to be filled. So, we're working on that. We actually have three firefighters started today in the fire academy. They're going to be there for 10 weeks, they get out, they're going to hit the floor, it's going to help our manpower a lot. So, I mean, when people retire, it takes, we talked about this, it takes time to get them first hired, and then it's five to six months to get them in the academy. It's just, there's nothing we can do about that. So, that's a challenge for our overtime budget, the last three years and this year, to be honest with you.
I guess my question with the overtime deals more with, it's going up incrementally every year, and I don't know what the change in operation, I know it's 1.8% increase in calls, you know, so you'd think if it was, you know, that the regular budget would be below budget if we weren't staffed, because we're staffing to 12.
Staffing two shifts of 12, two shifts at 11. At one point, there were four shifts of 12, but during the downtimes, we went to two shifts of 12, two shifts at 11. So, right now, with the vacancies, I'm at two shifts at 10, two shifts at 11. So, two shifts, if anybody's out, no matter what, you have to hire. And the other one is, if there's more than one personnel, you have to hire. I've had two personnel with long-term injuries. Stuff happens, you know, but it's just, it's part of the mix, some years, some others, but I think we've done, with the hiring we're doing now with the personnel, is going to help us a lot when they hit the floor in April.
So, you think the overtime will come down because of those?
I think this year's going to be a challenge, but I think going forward next year, with the personnel hire, we don't have as many retirees. We have one more vacancy now, we'll probably be hiring soon firefighter, and another one that probably won't be back, so probably have to hire two more firefighters. If we hire them now, they probably wouldn't hit the floor till August. So, but by July 1, after that, I don't foresee a lot of people retiring.
We'll probably hire three, actually.
At least probably for three years.
Yeah.
So, we've had a couple of challenging years with vacancies, and that's a big, it's a big factor for the last couple, three years.
And one number that jumped out to me is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it 1,000 shifts a year that have to be covered for overtime because of benefits and sick and all those types of things? Does that read that in the report?
Department-wide.
Yeah.
You've got 365 days in a year, and they're covered 24/7, and you've got the individuals that work those four shifts that cover those slots at three different stations, so that adds up.
Right, well, that's a big, a big number, so, right off the bat, your overtime has got to cover 1,000 shifts, you know, so there's your baseline, and then from there-
If you do hire, once you get up to 11 per two or 12, even, you know, if you've got 12 per shift, there's a lot less overtime. So, there's a give and take, and they, we, you know, taking classes, there's no real formula of what works better. Do you pay more overtime, or do you pay more guys? You know, we have a minimum of 10 that works very well for our town historically, and we've seen the deficiencies when we don't have that, especially for a second ambulance, it's impossible to run. But, you know, that's the give and take of it. You know, if you have less personnel, when it takes time to hire, you know, the overtime is going to go up. I mean, a lot of the other stuff, we have done better in sick time. It was high. We've been working with that, and Chief Judge, to myself, it's gotten better. I've looked at some other towns around us, it's comparable, they've had some issues in the past, and it seems to be not, we're not alone in that challenge, but we have been making that better. But, you know, firefighters are expected to be out more sick, I mean, they're in the back of these ambulances with people with the flu, everything that's going on around, I mean, the face-to-face, it comes back in the stations, you know. Was it too high? Yes. Is it getting better? Yes, I think it's more manageable now. We did a six-month analysis for the first six months. It's a little better than last year, but it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing challenge, but, you know, it does, people do get sick in the fire service more than others.
Chief, we're not hiring any more firefighters. That's correct, right? It's all paramedics.
Oh, all paramedic firefighters. They're all both, they're firefighters and paramedics, and to go back to some of the cost-benefits of an ambulance, if you were just hiring paramedics, not firefighters, it doesn't meet the cost, but all these guys that run the fire suppression also, they're all trained, so everybody's cross-trained in this. So, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, we didn't do EMS, we actually had more firefighters, but now, adapting to the times, everybody's cross-trained.
So, I, what I guess, to be a paramedic, the baseline is, I'm trained in firefighting first, and then I become, you know, EMTI, and then a P, is that right? So, I just-
So, the academy's training them to be a firefighter. Most of the firefighters we're hiring are coming to us from ambulance services.
Great. So, they have to be a paramedic even qualified to come into the service right now?
So, the bar is, you know, from the last, you know, our parents, the bar is raised all along.
It's about a year and a half of schooling to be a paramedic. It's a lot of, you know, the ongoing training it takes for everybody right now, and fire, EMS, everything, so, you have to be a paramedic even qualified to get in, and then you go to the fire academy, it's a 10-week program, you come back, so you're fully trained, and then the training is ongoing for both.
Okay.
There are mandates for a lot of EMS.
And how do we compare? I didn't think I saw a chart. How does Situate compare with our neighboring towns as far as percentage of paramedics versus like firefighters? You know, I think someone mentioned we have 22 paramedics on the staff. How do we compare with our neighboring towns as far as that goes?
I think everybody started going to ALS. We were actually the first town to provide ALS service in the South Shore. Rich Kelly was a former paramedic, he was really big in that, progressive, so, we were the first town to start ALS service, let me back, what, 18 years ago? 95, so, it's, you know, but all the other towns started to follow suit. So, I think a lot of them, John, are comparable as far as the number of paramedics. Nobody's hiring anything but paramedics now, because that's, you know, that's the demand, you want the job, that's what you have to do.
Thanks, John.
John, there's one thing that Mr. Green didn't talk about, if you could, very briefly, about the organizational duties, and particularly as they relate to emergency management.
Right, we mentioned that briefly. Emergency management is currently a function of the fire department. Fire chief, I believe, is also designated as the emergency manager for the town. That responsibility in and of itself is monumental, with all of the federal regulations and requirements that have been put in place since 9/11, and with the number of storms that come through this area, it just increases several times over. We made the recommendation in the report that emergency management be removed from that responsibility, whether it be placed in a standalone organization within the town or another position within the fire department. But, trying to manage, as we've already seen tonight, the sick time, the vacation time, the deployment of the units, plus doing all the other responsibilities of administrative tasks with fire chief, then adding on emergency management responsibilities is quite a load, and we feel that it would be more efficient, although it would cost additional dollars to fill that position, it would be more efficient utilization of resources.
Where do you typically see that reside?
It really depends on where in the country you are. A lot of emergency management agencies are within the fire department, many are county-based, and then the towns work with the counties to coordinate their services, but it does work within a fire department in a number of circumstances, we've seen.
Most fire departments, especially outside, you get to the cities, they have separate emergency management directors like Quincy does, most have it in the fire service. We do, my deputy chief loves fire prevention and training, so if I could ever get a training officer or a fire prevention, a combination of, and take that pressure off the deputy, I would have additional help, especially when you get these storms.
Chief, that's one of the things I was thinking about, just from the report, was training. One thing, it seemed to say that if there was somebody, a captain, that could take on the training and do that, that would be helpful. The code compliance, I know that we were doing, one of the thoughts I had was, is there a possibility to, for fire suppression and making sure that, you know, everybody's compliant, is there's a possibility to offset that? And initially, I thought building department, something like that, it's another position, or possibility of part-time, somebody, you know, somebody who, because when I worked at the Vermont Fire, what was it called? The state of Vermont, whatever, it was the fire, shall we say, department of, within the Department of Labor dealing with fire throughout the state, a lot of these were former firefighters who were going out, checking to make sure that everything was compliant, you know, for fire suppression, everything else. I was wondering if there's a possibility of signing retired firefighter or somebody who doing it part-time, just to go out, to offset that investing or inspecting and doing that aspect of it, you know?
It's possible. Most departments, some departments have it at the deputy level, but most departments have it at the captain or lieutenant level. So, they'll have, instead of four captains, four lieutenants, they'll have five captains, four lieutenants, and the deputy is more administrative with the chief, emergency management, so-
I'm only saying that because then you'd have, you know, fire prevention, that's a Department of Fire Prevention in the state of Vermont. My reason for saying this, because that seems more administrative to kind of send somebody out to invest, inspect, whereas deputy would be dealing with the emergency with you and looking at it and all that other stuff. That's all I was thinking, you know, instead of sending somebody out to inspect.
Yeah, I mean, if we had, if I had an extra person, say, an extra-
Yeah, I mean, if we had, if I had an extra person, say an extra captain or lieutenant, I could probably make them a hybrid training, fire prevention officer. And, you know, make that a little bit more efficient, take some of the burden off the administration right now. You need somebody dedicated for fire prevention. The code changes, the meetings you have to go to. It's ongoing, so they have to, I can't send eight officers out for that kind of training. So I need one person to be dedicated to fire prevention. I could have the officers help with the inspections, is what I'm doing now. But training is another thing. I've challenged the captains up, providing training now. So we're doing the best of what we have. The captains are actually gonna set, there's four groups, four captains, four lieutenants. January is group one, February is group two, so they're gonna set up the training and take some of the pressure off the deputy, and also some of the fire prevention and inspection stuff. They'll have to pick that up if the deputy gets very busy, say a storm comes.
Does, like the City of Boston, inspektional services, is that covered in that? Or is the Fire Department themselves-
Fire Department has that, that's a whole division. It's a whole division. And they could take you a month, five weeks to get an inspection in Boston. It's difficult, you know. We try to get out there, we pride ourselves, and we have, I think, one of the better fire prevention services around, you know. I think we really, you know, the deputy was out there, we're doing the inspections. You really educate yourself. You go to all the meetings, go to the seminars, you take your classes, but you really need one person to be a point person, but I'd like to have it at the captain or lieutenant's level. Have an extra person, it would take some of the pressure off. Talking about the administration recommending 25%, we're at 16%. It would help in a lot of different areas, but the deputy could actually take a lot more administrative role, operations role, and, you know, get a hybrid fire prevention training person.
Would one more person get you to that 25% from 16? That was the question.
I mean, not 25%, but it gets as close, but it would make our department run, you know, administration-wise more effectively.
And?
One question. Is any thought given to the amount of time that it takes an ambulance to get from the town of Situate to Central Hospital? Because I think the time probably has increased due to Derby Street shops during construction, due to the repair of the overpass at Route 3. Has that been figured into the time that an ambulance is in the process? Has that been something that's been looked at?
That's an ongoing challenge, and we are one of the furthest towns from the hospital. It is what it is. It takes a long time to get to Situate. In most people's minds, it's sometimes a good thing, but for an ambulance run, it's 20 to 25 minutes, depending on where you are. And the turnaround time to get our ambulance back, it takes time. So this, again, second ambulance one to have in town, because it's an hour and a half to two hours. By the time you get there, get the paperwork done, discharge the person, you know, if you use medication, you have to go to the pharmacy, get back. So it's a one, it's an hour and a half to two-hour turnaround time. So that's a challenge for us, but there's nothing we can do about that. Construction stuff, stuff goes on. There's nothing you can do about that, but for the most part, that's not gonna change.
And that was contained within the reliability analysis. That analysis looks at if a second call comes in before the first call clears. So if that ambulance is at the hospital or on their way back, they're not in the response area yet, that would count as a second simultaneous call.
So that has, that could probably be another good reason for the full-time second ambulance.
I agree.
The one thing I did note was, it was a good analysis on the part-time, full, yeah, part-time, full-time. I wasn't convinced part-time. I know other regions do it, but I wasn't convinced on it. But I did appreciate that, at least the insight on it.
Yeah, and like I said, we're not alone. Right now, Marshalls running two full-time, Hingham's running two full-time, they're running a third in callbacks. And we'll be doing that probably in three years. You know, just the demand's gonna go there, and, you know, it's, EMS is gonna keep increasing, and we have to try to meet that demand.
Other questions from the board? Anybody else?
Chris Karshis, Dr. Drew. Was there a bottom line to the study? It sounds to me like they're advocating we need more firefighters, we need more paramedics. Is there a bottom line to it? And is the town gonna support more paramedics?
Well, I think, and I'll let Chief answer, paramedics is what we're hiring going forward. So that's, we definitely support paramedics. In fact, the days of just firefighters are, frankly, we're ruling it out, it's gone. 19, I think, they're, I didn't count them all up, because they're not, it's not surmised at the end as far as the actual recommendation.
19 recommendations, correct.
But they're all recommendations, and I think what we should do is evaluate. Certainly, it certainly talks about, from my vantage point, yeah, we gotta think about, to make sure, ensure that that second is going. And right now, it sounds like by hiring the additional two plus three, it's three, right? The three are right now.
We have three in the academy right now.
Right, so that'll put us up to 46.
That'll put us up to 45, and like I said, one person not coming back. So right now, we have one vacancy to get to 46. And the, there's another person that's probably not coming back, doing an illness. So it's, we'll probably be hiring two, I would say, so.
So bottom line is, Chief, if I'm misstating it, tell me. We're looking to see how the three people who come in to take care of the overtime issue, to see if we can bring that issue down, because it's a cost.
It's a cost, and I think, like I said, the vacancies are a big factor in that. A lot of big factors in that, but I think going forward, after we hire two firefighters, I don't see anybody, unless somebody gets sick, hurt, or whatever, in the next three years, seeing the turnover that we've had for the last three or four years. So that does help, you know.
So that should measure probably the costs, so we're not gonna continue to go up. We should probably be in-
My estimates, in my estimates, this has been the last real challenging year, above and beyond the overtime, probably the worst year, just due to the amount of vacancies we've had. And we basically had four for most, a lot of the year, and Chief Judge and one of the lieutenants retired in September.
So with respect to, like, the, to Chris Karsh, Karshia, I'm sorry, his point, it sounds like maybe there might be another hire for administrative issues.
I can address that if I can, Mr. Chair. The study was commissioned for the sole purpose of finding out what it would take to run the second ambulance all the time. That's why the funds were appropriated, and to look at other issues and challenges in the Fire Department, like the dispatch and the lack of electronic and automated calls and things like that. The recommendations about being able to run the second ambulance full-time also involve collective bargaining, and they have been being bargained with the union for the last year and a half. But they are subject to agreement by both parties.
Yeah, I didn't really get into the collective bargaining, only because it's kind of pending right now. But so, but there's a lot of good stuff, I believe, from reading this, that we could apply and taking a look at it going forward.
Will we be able to see that, at least the recommendations, that work?
Yeah, this is, it's a public document.
It is now.
I would say about 40% of our challenges will be met with this new public safety building. A lot of it is our communications, our dispatch, our response times, spreading our resources out. So a lot of those challenges will be met. As I say, I estimate about 40% of the things that I came up with, along in the study and also in my own, doing an evaluation of what I feel we need to improve on.
I noticed that, between the building, the response time, also the technology that's gonna be put into it was huge, plus the equipment, because we replaced the ladder, replaced the various cars, the trucks that were being used. And of course, now I think we're looking at an engine. Well, that was an interesting component, saying that we have two engines that are in reserve, no, three, in reserve possibility of like, why ensure two of them and the repairs and everything? Can we at least-
We just towed away two.
So two of them are gone.
So we have two, our old squad and our old engine that was down in Hummerock for years. So right now, we have two spare engines, one in Station 3, one in Station 1. And one we bought from Cohasset, it's an older engine, but it still operates. And we like to use that during the storms. We don't wanna put new apparatus down on the coastline if we can help it. So we have to dedicate those trucks to the coastline. So having two, you know, we have one backup that's a 95, and one backup, what is it, 87?
87.
It's shaped for an 87, but it's still running, so it costs us short money to purchase it.
Is that the one down in Hummerock?
No, that's the one, actually, it used to be a Cohasset engine. We bought it from Cohasset when we were actually in need, waiting for an engine. So that's one of our coastal trucks during the storms. And so I think, you know, the way we operate with three engines, to having the two backups, you know, they're older, but they function.
So people understand during the storms, the reason is because we've lost trucks during the storms, because of the water coming in with the salt, ladder truck got them one time, and mining was almost destroyed. So it's better to use these, because if they get destroyed, it's not as big a hit as it is with, plus insurance will hopefully cover it, but.
So a ladder truck is in, it's just, we're just waiting for the equipment. We had a challenge with one of our vendors, so it's, all the training's been done on it. The guys are doing driver training still, but I estimate probably about a month before we get that going. We were hoping by the first of this month, but we had a challenge with a vendor, but we couldn't do anything about. So we're just going to someone else to get our tools and equipment for that truck, but it's here. And the, when that's in service, our old ladder will get towed away, that we traded in, driven away.
Other questions? Anybody else? This is a great report. It's very helpful, and, yeah, I encourage people to read it. It's insightful, you know, there are a lot, there's a lot of good stuff that can be worked out, hopefully for the benefit of the town going forward, but I appreciate it.
It was our pleasure, and thanks to the Fire Department and the town staff. Without them and the work that they put into it to get us started, collecting all the data and information, we would not have been able to do this analysis. So we appreciate all of their help and patience through the process.
Thank you for coming up. I understand you traveled, and I know in another 20 years, maybe you'll come back. You'll see Sean up here again, you know?
Wise guy.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. All right, let's see, it's about 5 after 8, folks. Our next discussion is, is a discussion financing. Let me ask you this, Mr. Frazier's here, and I know that Nancy Holt's here. And I don't wanna short-circuit, it's an important, how long do you think, presentation? I'd like to take a five-minute break, because we've been doing this for two hours. So it'd be nice if you needed to set up, Nancy?
Sure, absolutely.
So we're gonna take a five-minute break, folks, and then we're gonna get right back at it about, say, 8:15.
Good.
All right? So we're just back to order right now. Our next discussion is financing for the public facilities, bond market, OPEB. Financial advisor, Peter Frazier, good evening, thank you for coming. SVP, First Southwest, and Nancy Holt, our finance director. Pam, good evening, also our treasurer's with us today, tonight. So I'll turn it over to you, Peter or Nancy.
I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I'm gonna let Peter just start with his presentation.
Perfect. Great. Well, thanks very much for allowing me to address you tonight, and thanks to Pam for the, and Patricia and Nancy for the invitation. Essentially, what Patricia had asked me to do was give a sort of an overview of the bond rating process in light of the fact that you've got some considerable projects authorized and in the shoot, if you will, for borrowing. What I was hoping to do was talk a little bit about the borrowing, the bond rating process, talk about some of the underlying analysis, and then focus a little bit on OPEB, because that's sort of an issue du jour and an area that the town may be wanting to address going forward. In terms of the, just to get sort of everybody on the same page, and perhaps the folks at home, in terms of what a bond rating is, bond rating is simply an opinion of a bond rating agency on the creditworthiness of the issuer. And they're used by the market participants, underwriters, buyers and sellers of municipal debt, in order to gauge the relative value of securities that are in the market, not only at the time they're issued, but as they're traded back and forth in the market. The bond rating is paid for by you, the issuer, but it's really for the protection, if you will, or for the benefit primarily of the investor, and secondarily of the issuer, because it gives you market access and allows you to borrow at very low interest rates. So it's an easy way, and it's done sort of with an alphanumeric or a number of symbols. The two chief bond rating agencies in Massachusetts are Moody's and Standard and Poor's. You can see the rating scales, starting from AAA, which is the highest rating attainable, down to BAA3 for Moody's, and triple B minus for Standard and Poor's. And those gradations, actually, there are ratings below that, which are non-investment grade, which would be junk bond type ratings, so we're not gonna focus on that one, because it's not applicable to you. And actually, no one in Massachusetts is currently below investment grade. In terms of, so going from highest to lowest, the highest rating represents the most creditworthy, the strongest credits, the most likely to repay on time and in full for the investor. And as you go down the rating scale, those investments become more speculative. And there's a risk-return equation, where if you are very highly rated, folks are very comfortable buying your debt and are willing to accept a lower rate of return than if you were lower rated, and it's a little, you know, if you're gonna be up at night worrying, you wanna be compensated for that lower credit rating. In the, in red, you can see sort of the recent history of the town of Situate, and it's good news. In 2008, you were at AA3, recalibrated to, in 2010, to AA2. The town saw fit to switch to Standard and Poor's, and I'll get into their different rating criteria in a minute. But, and has been very aggressive, or diligent, or, I'm not exactly sure what the right word for it is, but you've been, particularly your town manager has led, or town administrator has led sort of the charge in terms of getting that bond rating improved. You saw upgrades in 2011, and you're currently at AA+, which is the second highest rating attainable, which is actually the same rating the US government has right now from Standard and Poor's. In 2012, and obviously, the ultimate goal is to get to that AAA. Certainly to retain the AA. What this is, is a graph showing yield curves by rating. And essentially, what this does is give you an idea of anywhere along the yield curve scale. If you, for instance, borrow a 20-year bond, you're actually borrowing 20 different, you're making 20 different loans, one maturing each year out into the future. And if you see the AAA scale, which is the lower one, those are the interest rates by individual maturity that you could expect to get at the time this graph was made. Whereas the BAA, which is much lower in credit rating, has the higher. So you can see the difference in interest rates by rating category, or referred to quality spreads. And you can figure out what the value is in terms of lower interest cost by applying that to your bond issue. So if we go on to the next one, what basically, looking at the value of credit ratings, one, we talked about that higher ratings translate into lower borrowing costs, lower interest rates. You also have greater market access, meaning that there are more buyers of your bonds out there. The higher up you go, the more demand, the lower the interest rates. Those quality spreads, the difference, interest rate difference between the rating categories translate into money, if we're talking about, say, a hypothetical $10 million 20-year issue. The difference in additional interest costs that you accrue in this hypothetical example, and it's a sort of a ballpark, is about $228,000 going from AAA to AA. It's about $1,004,000 or $1,005,000 going from AAA to CAA, and 3.3 million going down to the triple B. So you can see there's a real dollar value, particularly, like the town of Situate now, that you've got over $100 million worth of authorized but unissued debt out there, that this translates into real money over the life of the bonds in order to, if you can retain that high credit rating. The other value of a credit rating, I think, is that it's an unbiased assessment of the town's well-being. It's sort of, they're looking at you and looking at not only sort of how you're running your operation, but also some of the inherent attributes of the community. And going to those major credit factors that they look at, they look at sort of four broad categories. Economy and institutional framework, which is about 40% of the rating. Management, 20%, finances, 30%, and debt and contingent liabilities, 10%. And that contingent liabilities includes the pension and OPEB or other post-employment benefit liabilities. The, this isn't, it's relatively new, that they've gone to this more formulaic approach in terms of their criteria, where they're assigning set percentages. It used to be more of a black box, where, you know, you present essentially all the same information, but it was a little more mysterious in terms of how they were coming up with the credit ratings. Standard and Poor's recently has established this, which I think is a good thing, because it really gives you- it really gives you a better way to sort of quantify, okay, where are our strengths and relative weaknesses? Institutional framework, just to explain that. That really is more sort of things that relate to the state in terms of, you know, what kind of oversight the state provides, what kind of backstops, that sort of thing. So that's the reference to institutional framework. If we talk about economy and the kind of things that Standard &amp; Poor's is looking at every time you come to market, they're looking at local, regional, national and global economy or economic phenomena. They're looking at your tax base, what the size is, the mix between commercial and residential, personal. Also, the growth in your tax base historically as well as projected. They look at your employment situation or unemployment rate. They're looking at your proximity to employment centers. The demographics, obviously, how wealthy the community, not only in terms of value per capita, but also per capita income, essentially trying to gauge what are your, how deep are your pockets? Also, home values play a role, building permits are also used. In terms of management, and this is an area where in the last five years, significant strides have been made as management has actually become a more important factor to Standard &amp; Poor's. You know, they're clearly looking at the manager's qualifications and experience, but increasingly looking at policies and procedures, looking at your budgeting practice, looking for forecasted budgets, as well as sort of this year and the coming year. Capital planning, there's a big emphasis on. Essentially, they're looking to see, are you forward-looking? Do you know what's going to hit you? Or are you sort of stumbling along from one year to the next? And this is an area that the town, I think, historically has done well, but has really made some considerable improvements more recently. In terms of finances, here they're looking, and again, it's actually split up into three different areas when they talk about finances. But generally, they're looking at your undesignated or unassigned general fund balances, your financial cushion, if you will. They look at your stabilization funds. They want to see structural balance in terms of recurring revenues being able to equal recurring expenses. So you're not going from one year to year, living on one-shot revenues, essentially. In terms of the way, some of the other items that they're looking at with respect to finances, you know, they look at your liquidity position, you know, sort of how much cash you have. That's 10%. They look at budgetary performances, 10% of that 30%. And finally, budgetary flexibility. In terms of their last rating review, they rated you very strong with respect to liquidity, excuse me, and strong for both budgetary performance and budgetary flexibility. So very good grades with respect to your finances. And I understand, I just looked at your '14 CAFR, which is a big event in itself, getting the comprehensive financial report out. But it appears that the finances continue to improve. So that's great news, particularly in light of the borrowing that may be coming up. With respect to debt and long-term obligations, obviously, they look at the amount of debt, the sources of revenue that you're going to be paying that debt. In terms of flexibility, obviously, if something's exempt from Proposition 2.5, you have more flexibility in terms of being able to afford that debt. Enterprise-supported debt as well, because you can set the rate to whatever that debt is, that gives you an element of flexibility. And finally, looking at what's tax-supported within the levy limit because of the Prop. 2.5 levy ceiling, that's seen as a limitation. And to the extent that you guys have had a very successful history of debt exclusions, for instance, for big projects, that bodes well with respect to the credit rating. In terms of, they are also looking at amortization, how quickly you pay back that debt, as well as offsetting aid payments and subsidies that might sort of mitigate against the debt. And finally, unfunded pension and OPEB liabilities. And that gets us to, and obviously, you're aware, you're a member of the Plymouth County system with respect to pension, and that, I think, is expected, the unfunded liability there is expected to be amortized by 2033 at the current, under the current schedule. And then finally, OPEB liabilities. And I think one of the reasons we wanted to talk about that is because sort of that's sort of the unaddressed issue in the town's portfolio at the time, or at the moment. OPEB obviously represents the town's share of retirees' accrued health expense. You know, from an accounting standpoint, the, basically, we're moving to GASB, with GASB 45, we're trying to capture now the full cost of the employee while they're working as opposed to paying benefits to retired employees from pay-as-you-go. So the notion is, if you're producing now as an employee, the expense, not only salary but pension expense and OPEB expense should be sort of built in, at least from an accounting standpoint, they want to recognize that. And so the GASB 45 has sort of precipitated the need to establish a trust fund, which the town did successfully in 2011. And some nominal funding started at that point, and contributions have been made. And I think the balance currently is about $373,000 on a liability that's now about $65 million. So, you know, the ball is moving, but obviously, Standard &amp; Poor's at this point is currently, and this is sort of the weakness, for lack of a better word, is basically saying they don't see the town has a viable funding plan yet. And you're not alone, but I think this is one of the reasons that this is important to discuss. The viable funding plan that they describe right now is basically comprised of three things, irrevocable trust, which the town has established, continuous and significant contributions, and that's obviously the tricky part. You've started and you're making contributions, but whether or not they're significant enough. And the other thing they look for is, are you taking steps to mitigate that liability? And you only have limited levers to pull in that regard. But for some communities in Massachusetts, there are some opportunities. With respect to some things to consider, what some other AAA-rated municipalities do in terms of their approach to the OPEB liability, I think first and foremost, a written policy or plan with respect to how the town decides to, wants to address it. That's one thing that they look for. A dedicated override is something that other communities, and this is, this is not a recommendation, but for instance, the town of Wellesley passed an $18 million override where they overrode the Prop. 2.5 by $1,008 for 10 years running to provide seed money to put towards the OPEB trust. Other communities dedicate a percent, you know, have a dedicated revenue source, like a percent of free cash every year, 10%, 20% that's going to go in, sort of, and that sort of everybody agrees on. Other folks have decided on a fixed dollar amount as opposed to a percent of free cash in addition to the pay-as-you-go appropriation. And, you know, finally, talking about adjusting the town retiree contribution mix is another option. I don't know, I think you guys are at 50/50 in terms of, which I may be the...
On average, 53/47, so there's probably nothing.
Yeah, so there really isn't any movement there because I think you're at your statutory floor with respect to contributions. So anyway, that's sort of what I had prepared, but I'm happy to answer any questions relative to this or any other thoughts that you had about your pending borrowings.
Questions on the board?
I have a question.
Mara?
If, Peter, thank you. This is great. If we don't make any significant progress on our OPEB, just due to the difficulty of doing that, can that potentially negatively impact our rating in the future?
Yeah, I think so. You know, everyone's struggling with this. And a number of communities have sort of deferred taking action or are making token contributions to their trust if they've established a trust. But it's clear that the farther we go, sort of lack of inaction will go from being sort of neutral to a negative. And, you know, it's important that folks realize that no one factor necessarily tips over a rating, but, you know, you've got a lot of debt coming online and, which is a weight. Your finances have been improving, which is sort of pressure upward. You know, the economy seems to be improving locally in terms of the assessed values and that sort of thing. So that's a push-up. So you've got this sort of balance of individual things. But to answer a short question with a long answer, yeah, I think eventually, and probably sooner rather than later, it is seen as a real negative.
Sean?
Peter, if you go back a couple of slides and things we can do, starts other post-employment benefits, the third one, how would we go about by mitigating of growing costs?
Well, that would be, for instance, for other Massachusetts communities that aren't near that 50/50, there's a statutory floor, as I understand it, that if you're going to provide retiree health benefits, the minimum contribution the community can make is 50%. So the, now, if you were at a mix of, let's say you were making 75% contributions and the retiree is making 25, obviously, you could change that, push more of that expense to the retiree.
On the, all right, I follow you.
Unfortunately, well, fortunately for your retirees, but unfortunately, that's not a lever that you have to push because you're already at that floor.
53/47. Okay, thank you.
So Peter, what's in your experience as the significant contribution that you've seen? I mean, we have, you know, some allocation every year, but clearly, it's not enough. What, I know you said Weymouth, I think, did, was it an $18 million?
Wellesley.
Wellesley.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Wellesley. That's not reality, though, for us. What other communities are, you know, what's a significant contribution? Because, and it has to be almost annual, is what it sounds like. You have to have something in place.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you're familiar with the way pensions work and the fact that you've got a normal contribution, which essentially is the cost of the current employees to the pension system for that particular year. But you're also making essentially catch-up payments for the unfunded portion, for retirees that are out there, that you were always doing pay-as-you-go contributions and not really catching up to get the system fully funded. It's analogous to that where I think at some point, you've got to create a schedule where you say, okay, we're going to increase our appropriation, not only to do the pay-as-you-go component, but get closer and closer to the ARC, the annual required contribution, to eventually get fully funded. Right now, I think what's happening is because of the underlying assumptions in terms of what the growth in healthcare costs are going to be and that sort of thing, the target keeps moving farther and farther away. Because unless you're making payments that are greater than that growth rate, you're falling farther behind. Your liability is going to increase every year.
What's a growth rate annually? Is anybody?
All of those assumptions are built into the actuarial study that was provided for you, that is, you guys do every couple of years, I think. And it changes. And, you know, one of the difficult things, this is sort of an editorial comment, but one of the difficult things about OPEB is that there are so many assumptions built into whatever that number is in terms of what will medical cost inflation be 10 years from now? I certainly don't know. It's somewhere between negative and, you know, 100%. So, you know, the actuaries take all your mortality information, all the information on your employees, current and retired, and try to figure out ballpark what that number is. But it's dependent on all of those underlying assumptions. So it probably would be a good exercise to sit down with the actuary and really understand what goes into those numbers. But the long and the short of it, it's a very large number regardless of whether you take a conservative approach or not so in terms of what the inflation rate is on that.
And if I can interject, in E-PAC, it's, there should be a single sheet, probably after Peter's presentation, that has OPEB comparative data, where we did survey 26 towns, including ourselves, and looked at their liability, their discount rates, their contributions to date, the percent funded they are, and if they had a trust fund, and if there was something funky about the trust fund. In some cases, before, there was actual trust fund legislation. People adopted special purpose stabilization funds, they had special legislation, and some of the people surveyed had actually approached PRRIT, which is the Pension Investment Board, to take their OPEB funds and mix them with the state's pension funds and invest them that way, rather than administer them themselves. And as you can see, there's a very large gradation between percent funded, from 0% up to 30%, which is, of course, Wellesley, who's got 32.5% set aside, 32.5 million set aside, to other communities that have zero. Now, we're in that mix, but we also looked at where we were as compared to the maximum of that group, the average and the median. And in the budget that you will hear later in your hearings, not tonight, but on another night in probably February, when we get to the OPEB recommendations from the town administrator's budget, it is, it has been increased so as to bring us up to the median of that survey, which will also be looked on favorably by Standard &amp; Poor's because it will be an increase and that we're actually looking at what's going on around us in other communities and how we fare in response to those. And also, the discount rate, which I think is the third column over, that's an assumption that you provide the actuary. The actuary will say, well, what's your assumption for your discount rate? And if you don't fund, it's usually anywhere from 3.25 to 4.75. And the higher it is, the more, higher your number's going to be. And if you do fund, if you're funding your ARC, your annual required contribution, then you get a higher interest rate. You usually see between seven and eight because you actually have funds in the bank that are earning returns, so you don't have to fund as much money. And that's why the more money you can put aside, the less money it's going to cost out of people's pockets in the end. But all of that is with the constraints of budget that you have, while simultaneously funding the pension liability. But we wanted to provide you with something that gave you an idea of what's happening in other communities and why variation that it is. And as Peter mentioned, Standard &amp; Poor's has been looking at this, as all the rating agencies have, but now it's becoming more and more central to the rating. It's not just, okay, yeah, people have a liability, they've got to deal with it, we're not looking at that closely. It's now much more central as it becomes more of a piece of our financials. That was a long interjection, my apologies.
What's the ARC?
It's a good one. Annual Required Contribution. If everything was great, this is what you should spend every year. So our ARC is 5.5 million.
Sean, is that what we should be, is that what we, based on the amount that's owed, we should be spending 5.5?
Right, so right now, we're spending, I think, our pension assessment for fiscal '16 is 4.1 million. So this is what, if we didn't have that, we would be fully funding our OPEB assessment, which would be 5.5 million. So just to give you an idea of where it is in the ballpark, our pension liability is less than our OPEB liability because... less than our OPEB liability because we've been working on it longer. But even that, as Peter said, it's going to be fully funded from county up to the year. Now, it's 2034.
Twenty-three.
And we're only at, I think, 59%.
Okay. So you've told us the bad news.
Well, I mean, it really started because Gatsby decided to draw a line in the sand about four years ago or whatever and said, okay, now everybody has to change the way you've been doing business for 375 years and start accruing all the old debt. So it's, I mean, it's an unattainable number. No one's doing it. People are trying to make an effort at it, and the communities are, are the ones that don't just barely pass overrides by 300 votes for a new middle school. You know, you've got Weston and Dover and all these towns that are doing it. So, you know, we've made an effort to do it, but we've got to realize that every dollar that we put into this is a dollar that is going to be coming out of the operating budget that is tight as it is, and it's really not going to make much of a difference. I mean, unless we're going to put, you know, if you're saying we're going to go to the median, so we're going to double it from 0.5% to 1%, I assume, you know, so we put 75,000 or something in now?
Yeah, fiscal 16, the Financial Sourcedness Committee was looking at just over 82,000, which would be in competing with the financial policies of 2% of whatever the Summitt County pension assessment is.
Right, right. So we're going to double it to 162, which I don't think is going to cause Standard and Poor's to jump us up to a, you know, a AAA bond. But it is going to impact a teacher, a firefighter, you know, a lot of other things that people can put their arms around. So I think we're making a good effort the way we are, but I don't think it's, I think it's very, very hard to chomp off this and put a lot of energy and funds into this when we have so many other issues that we're dealing with. I think it's unrealistic. I don't think it's what people really want to do. I think, like you mentioned, the goal of this whole thing was when the pension paid itself off, that those monies would just be diverted to this and you'd catch up with the OPEB then. But of course, they kept pushing up in years, so that numbers, that dates may never come. So until then, we do like we've always done. This year's budget pays for last year's or last employee's healthcare. I think it's a difficult question. And again, directly counter sinks the operating budget, you know, that we struggle with anyways.
There are some things we can do that are non-monetary, which include creating a trust, a trust document. We don't have a trust document. We have a trust, but we have no trust document. So that's something that we can do that doesn't cost us anything, that shows the rating agencies that, yes, we are serious about our OPEB liability. We, not only do we have a trust, but we have a trust document saying how the trust is to be invested, what controls the trust, et cetera. And that's something that's lacking in some communities, but has been adopted in others, and they're being, you know, defer to Peter that you're seeing more of them being adopted.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why wouldn't we just do that?
That's something we can absolutely do.
And what's the impact of that on, I mean, I think the whole goal of this conversation is to get either up to AAA or not drop from AA.
Or drop.
You know, what are the things other than putting a million dollars a year into this fund?
Well, I think on the slide that's up there now, a whole list of these things. And the top one was the one we were just talking about, a written policy, a plan about it. And that's something that we can do that has no monetary cost. And then there are the other things that we've looked at now, dedicated revenue source, we have it in our financial policies, you know, already. But these are all the different things that we can do to address that, which all collectively have a positive impact with Standard and Poor's when they rate us.
Right, so the only non-monetary one is to do the plan?
Correct.
I vote for the plan.
Other questions? Questions from the audience?
I do have one other question for Peter before he goes. So we talked about this earlier, we're about to bond about $70 million with the debt, and we want to do it quickly to get the interest rates at the low right now. How do you facilitate that? Because we don't need $70 million in cash on day one. Is there any way to get some sort of tiered receipt of money or deferred interest? Or is your only thing just to reinvest it back into some sort of low-paying?
The Massachusetts sort of municipal finance statutes aren't terribly creative with respect to that. When you borrow long-term as a bond, you're obligated to pay principal and interest starting the subsequent fiscal year. So they're, you know, looking for something creative, like we want to lock in the rates today, but maybe not have any payments for two or three more years. You don't really have that option. You know, you can do level debt, which will tend to reduce the debt service impact in the early years. You pay for it because you're paying the debt off more slowly over the long term, but with rates as low as they are, maybe that's, you know, that's not a bad thing. As well as, you know, that approach would also ensure that you've got an asset that's good for 50 years, let the people that are going to be in town 20 years from now pay a share of, you know, a reasonable share of that cost. But there aren't any...
So what would your, your advice to us would be? You have to borrow it all and you just take the 62 million that you're not using today and put it in a short-term investment?
If the plan was, you know, we really think interest rates are at or near their lows, which they are, and we really want to lock in, you wouldn't necessarily have to lock in all of it now. You might say, geez, let's do 2/3 or 3/4 of it. We'll know exactly what the payments are, and when we need more money in a year or a year and a half from now for these projects, we'll borrow a second tranche then and hope that interest rates haven't risen too much. That could mitigate against, we can model this stuff for you, so if there's any sort of combination of scenarios that you want to look at, it's easy to do that with a sensitivity analysis on the interest rate for the last piece.
I think they said both, I mean, all projects are going to be built by 9/17.
Yep.
So it's really only a two-and-a-half-year window.
Yep.
So I wonder if there's any, it'd be interesting to see if there's any, you know, any benefit to that. The other thing is, on the yield curves of a, we were looking at, what, 20, 25, and 30 years?
Mm-hmm.
What's, what do you know about those in terms of the term of the debt? How do the curves look and what's the best?
All of the big projects that you're looking at are at least 30, or 30-year maximum term. So that's how long you could stretch it out. In terms of the yield curve, just within the last week, the long end of the curve has come down, which would suggest that maybe we want to push things out a little bit because you're not getting penalized with a much higher interest rate. But again, what I'd suggest we do is put some models together for you using real rates as opposed to sort of conservative estimates that I have a feeling we've shown before and show, you know, well, geez, we'll do half of it now, half of it later, and rates go up a full percentage point. What does that, what does that look like versus doing it almost all now? And my understanding is there might be some holdback because you're not sure, geez, if the costs come in under budget, then you don't want to have permanently financed for 30 years money that you don't need for these projects. So anyway, the long and the short of it is, it's easy to model, and we'd be happy to do that and show you what it looks like.
I think that'd be great, also to look at the, you know, the difference between the 20. I think we picked 25
Right.
because it was in the middle.
Yep.
You know, if there's any benefit to going longer
Sure.
or shorter.
Yep. Happy to do that.
And Tricia already did that, I think, in the bonding, that we weren't going to bond it all right away anyways, but the majority of it. Great.
Peter, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nancy, likewise, Pam?
Thanks.
Appreciate it very much. Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
Nope, nope. No problem.
All right, we're going to move on. Kevin, you're up next. A discussion vote, contracts on the DPW Director for Eastern Mineral Salt Contract and Aramesco Inc. change order. All right?
Sorry, it won't be as exciting.
Salt, it's always exciting, Kevin.
It's about salt.
How come it's going up $18? That's what I've, based from August until now, right?
We were aware it was going up. That's why we tied in at that lower rate and brought a bunch of salt in. Basically, I believe it has to do with shipping and supply and demand. I've heard, we heard back in the summer that there was a lot more demand down salt because they were caught without any salt or anything. So this salt that's been placed down there, where it typically doesn't go, and that's driven the cost up, the supply and demand.
So just, is this typically, I mean, August, it was really low, and so what's the general, as compared to a year ago or two years ago, is this in the same ballpark or is this a significant rise?
It's a significant rise. Last year, or in the summer, we were at $50.52. I think last year, we were around $47 a ton. It's gone up significantly. And that's why the advantage of having the salt shed and having the capacity we did, we were able to fill it up. This is the supplement that if we have a really bad winter, so that we maintain a pretty full salt shed just in case.
Sean?
Kevin, do we need it? What if we hold off? Will the price of fuel's coming down?
We can hold off. We want to have something in place if we do need to fill up.
Right. But you don't think, it's, do we have enough salt? Or, I know it's anybody's guess, but do we have 50% of these, this 2,500 tons left? Or?
Yeah, I believe we have, yeah, I believe we have 50%. And hopefully, we have, hopefully, we're all set and it's not going to snow and it'll be a really nice winter.
Right.
What percentage did we use last year, Kevin? Not to put you on...
We used everything we had. We ran out of salt.
We did...
We were begging, scrambling, and really looking for salt. To date, we've had about five salt issues where we've gone out and salted the entire town so far.
This is the first year we were proactive and filled the salt shed ahead of time, isn't it, Kevin?
Right.
So the answer to Maro's question, I think we're just kind of paying as we needed it, buying it as we need it, like many towns.
Well, we had put some salt in, but not enough.
Not like this.
No, not like this.
Right.
Other questions from the board?
Nope.
All right.
Motion?
Yep.
Move the Board's Leckman Award, the contract for the supply of road salt to Eastern Mineral for $68.36 per ton.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good.
Thank you. And that was off the state bid list. I didn't, it wasn't specific on that, but we did receive that through the state bid list. Pricing wise. Aramesco, I'm not really sure.
That's off. I was able to sign that. I just couldn't add last week.
Okay. So you don't have to worry. Is there anything else, Kevin, that we have with you? Is it?
Nope.
There's got to be. Let's see, I'll see this.
Let him go.
I apologize.
Quick, Ron.
The appointment for Kevin, is that under appointments?
Yeah, he doesn't have to be here for that, John.
Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we turn to the departmental FY '16 goals and budget reviews. First up, the library. So if everybody could turn to section 610. Jesse, good evening.
Good.
Good. You're going to be back in front of us shortly, next meeting, I think, on design.
Yes, we're going to be here on the 17th of February, is my understanding.
Seventeenth.
I believe that. Thank you.
Here with me. So I was looking at your budget, and what you were requesting was about $974,000. Town administrator came in about 2,000 less than that. There was a distinction, there was an increase in capital outlay that the town administrator gave as compared to what you were asking, which was 5,000. What's, what's the additional capital outlay?
Well, I think it's partially to potentially cover any expenses that may come up while we're in the temporary space, but we also have a requirement, a minimum requirement that we have to meet for the state in order to maintain certification, and we are at that number.
Minimum requirement for?
For certification of the library. And certification of the library is crucial to us, you know, being, keeping our state funding, which is also part of the project. But it also allows us to be in the network and to, you know, enjoy all of the benefits of being...
Minimum total budget?
Minimum budget, correct.
So the library's required to have a minimum budget in order to be able to receive state aid.
Did it use to...
It's a three-year average, so even though they'll be changing whatever, we have to maintain their consistent budget. So we funded the budget based on what she needs, given that she's changing her location, but we still have to have a place so she doesn't fall below the required contribution rate. So we've been putting it in capital outlay the last two years.
Did it used to just be based on the new, the purchases, this 115?
It's actually a dual requirement. So there's two requirements. One is the minimum that the budget needs to be funded to, which is the average of the last three years plus 2.5%. That's what the state wants to see. It's just, that's their formula. And then they also have a, actually, it's really two other requirements. It's a minimum number of hours, and that depends on the size of your population. And it's also a materials expenditure requirement.
Notice the only other difference was in part-time salaries. Your request was a 230, 599, and recommended was 222.
Well, we are not doing Sunday hours right now, and we won't be until we get back into the new facility, and I believe that plays into that law.
Gotcha, okay. Questions from the board?
Just that, so Sundays, right now, we're not open anymore?
Correct. So we will, I hope, resume those hours when we reopen the new facility, but for the time being, we won't be open on Sundays.
Starting July 1st.
Starting now.
Actually, we normally open in October on Sundays. As you may recall, we originally thought we were going to be moving out in October, and that timeline got pushed back a little bit with the selection of a new architect. So that decision was made on that timeline, but it's, you know, it still is, I think, probably the best decision for the library right now because we have a lot of other things that we need to contend with. But we do hope to resume those hours when we reopen the building.
Any other questions?
So is there a chance that we're not going to be open on Sundays, you think, in the new building?
I certainly hope that we will be, but that will be something that will be, need to be funded in the budget. So it'll need to be put back in the budget.
So is that a budget constraint, why we're not opening on Sundays now?
No, you know, our original timeline had us moving out of the building in October, and we had decided that opening on Sundays in the temporary quarters, when we are most likely going to have significantly less visitors, wasn't the best decision for the library. So that, when that timeline shifted, the decision had already been made, and there are some staffing issues with that right now that are going to have to be resolved before, before we can reopen on Sundays.
So we haven't eliminated Sunday hours. We've just eliminated them for the purposes of this. And then, once they're in the new facility, they'll be programmed back into the budget as they were as part of the original services in the library, along with all the other new things we'll be experiencing with the library.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's, there hasn't been like a policy decision to say, Sunday hours are gone at the library. It's just for these building projects.
Right, but that's through July, and then completed in September of '16. So a year and a half, we won't be open on Sundays.
Correct.
So we're having this conversation with all the departments, so I guess I'll say it now, is that there's going to be a tremendous amount of inconvenience to our residents as we're doing this in terms not only of the physical plan to the building, but also the level of programs that we offer. The library's going to be affected by that because their space is much smaller. The recreation department's going to be affected. So we're going to have to ask our residents to be patient with what they're not going to receive that they've become accustomed to because there's a light at the end of the tunnel and we'll have these great new facilities to do that. So we've been working with the library and the recreation department in saying, you are not going to be able to continue to offer 100% of the programs that you do because we're going through this 24-month period where we're transitioning to a whole different service level in new facilities over that timeframe, and we can't be all things to all people. But that doesn't mean we're eliminating them, it just means that they're going to go into hibernation for a while.
Right. I think, I guess I'm surprised that I'm learning that now in the budget process. Because I hear people talking to me all the time about... Because I hear people talking to me all the time about wanting the library open more and wanting to be there on Sundays and complaining about that now, before it was even, not even open at all on Sundays. So I guess that's my, my concern. And did anyone here know that the libraries are closed on Sundays?
No, I was going to say, I would think Sunday is one of the days, more so than one of the weekdays, that you would know better, used more often, because people aren't working, people who are working during the week would have an opportunity to go on Sundays or Saturdays. And now that opportunity's taken away, I would think.
Sunday's an added cost. It's billed on a volunteer basis at the library. It's not, you don't lose, you don't close on a Tuesday. You're open that additional day. There's no net gain.
Well, we're going to take heed on that. I can tell you that right now. And we're going to take heed on the recreation, which I don't like. It is what it is.
We can figure it out.
New question, Ann Burman. Did we budget for Sunday out in the current budget for this year that we are in for Sundays? Right now, is the library open? I understand that it was supposed to open in October, but was it funded until July 1st to be open on Sunday, in this current budget that we're in right now?
I believe the budget was funded originally for Sunday hours.
Then why is it?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So, thank you, Ann. So in other words, it's closed right now on Sundays?
Correct.
But we funded it. So, to be honest, why isn't it open then if we budgeted it?
That was my decision. And that's because the library is preparing to do a major building project and moving all their entire collection and weeding and doing a lot of things that needs the staff to concentrate in. And the Sunday hours were something that we had an opportunity to stop while all this other work was going on.
So are people working on Sunday, doing other stuff? Or they're making up those hours on other days, doing stuff?
No, the Sunday hours were always over and beyond everyone's schedule. So they're actually on a volunteer basis, and that is, that is a problem. And it's a problem for me, as a manager, to schedule those hours. They had to be voluntarily chosen.
So somebody didn't get paid for working on Sunday?
No, no, no. They were getting paid, but the compensation rates for the supervising librarians and the compensation rates for the peer professionals is quite different. And that's also created some scheduling issues.
Because it's time and a half or over?
No, there were staffing issues on a volunteer basis because the rate of pay was different. So it became more challenging for Jesse to schedule Sunday hours as well. So in recognition of the building project and the move and the volunteer and everything, the decision was made to stop the Sunday hours. She was, couldn't, she was having a challenge staffing it.
Well, this is not to you or to the whole, I get the reason why it was kind of canceled. Bottom line is, people have got to understand that they got to work with us, you know, on Sundays. I mean, this is the town benefit. They're going to, $12 million building, $5 million of which we're going to get from state, we're paying seven into it, you know. I mean, it's the whole point of the library, so they can benefit the town on the weekends. And, you know, staff's got to understand that. I don't contraption all of that stuff, but I'm like, it's the same thing with the fire and the police. They got to work with us on this.
You're absolutely right. And Jesse and I talked about this, and we believe we'll have an opportunity to do that when the new facility is opened, because there'll be a variety of different staffing needs that we're going to have to address. And that's one of them, including the volunteer thing, as opposed to returning Sunday hours and staffing them at a rate that, it's not volunteer, but it's weaved in. But that's also a bargaining issue.
Tricia, I trust you when you say you're going to work on it when it comes back. I know you will. I'm just only saying here and now, I assume with the board, it just, because it's a great thing for the library. It just, it needs to be open on the weekends.
It is really important to us as well, but it is a bargaining issue that has to be resolved.
Gotcha. All right. Other questions? Anybody else? Jesse, thank you. We'll see you on the 17th.
Thank you.
I thought you were on the 3rd. You're on the 17th.
All right, we'll move on to the next budget item. Bob?
Yeah.
61. Little's Walk, back to your back, folks.
I mean, I thought you were the 3rd, so I just added, but you're the 17th.
To the enterprise.
If it was always the 17th, you're good.
Bob, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Love the ice rink. Looks great out there.
Yeah.
Tell you, people are using it.
Yes.
I was just looking, the budget last year, we budgeted 1.3 million. This year, budget is at 1.291. It's a difference of about 13 million?
13 million?
No, 13,000 rather, 13,000, I'm sorry. We got 13 million. So it's gone down by comparison, still up by comparison to FY '14 and FY '13. I was going to ask you is?
Are we on track for '15? It looks like 610 through?
The 31st of October.
No.
No. So we're going to be under budget on this one. Do we have an idea? Well, you're halfway through, though. What deficit it might be?
You're saying revenues were a little bit ahead of the previous year. I, you know, I just got that email from Nancy today, and for some reason, our expenses are considerably higher. And I didn't know if some of our normal expenses were paid in a different period this year or something, but it's, it was a surprise to me. And I was going to meet with Nancy in the next day or two about it, but I knew that our revenues were pretty flat, year over year. So we budgeted $1,305, and it's going to come in close to $1,200, well, who knows, with weather. But we're on track for 610 through half the year?
In fiscal '15, we put in a spending freeze into place, partially through the year, because our expenses were outstripping our revenues. And I have talked to Bob about putting a spending freeze in place for fiscal '15, because the same thing is happening again, until we get into the spring season and see what it brings. Spring season is great revenues, wonderful, then we can lift the spending freeze. But right now, if we don't impose a spending freeze, our expenses are going to outstrip our revenues.
So what's the revenue at right now?
Right now, as of December 31st, $659,000 had been brought in.
So that's half, half the year? Is that usually half the revenue bump? I would say probably a little less, as a rule, yeah.
No, two years ago, it was $676,000 as of December 31st.
Two years ago. Is that 13 or 14?
13.
And those years ended at about 22, 23. So if we were on track, we'd end at about 22 or 23.
Yeah, I mean, in fiscal '13, we had retained earnings of about $28,000. In fiscal '14, we had retained earnings of $1,000.
Right.
So it's really close, so that's why we're being very cautious at this time. Our revenues have been declining, not horribly declining, but it is, you know, Bob can attest, it's a tough market right now for golf courses, there's a lot of competition. And we have a lot of built-in costs that we can't get away from, including the management fee for the course, as well as the debt. So the debt will be going away in fiscal '17.
So in other words, this last budget, this budget that we're approving, will be the last year that we're paying on the bond?
One more year, '17.
One more year.
Seventeen, so we got one. Just so that people understand, it's $382,000 that we've been paying, or thereabouts, on the bond. So we got this budget and then one more. And after that, then you're going to be looking at a surplus of over $300,000.
It's going to make life easier, for sure.
Are you comfortable with your dues and frequent player revenue projections? Because they seem pretty high, 14% increase if we're trending this close.
We actually, that's part of what we've done, is added some new categories. We're trying to customize some pass holders and it's a, it's meant to be kind of a win-win, because there are some fairly light periods on our tee time, particularly weekday mornings are our lightest time. Our play drops off after, say, 11 o'clock on the, on the weekends. And the twilight, which, you know, really late, like the last couple hours of daylight. All three of those, I've tried to put in a new season pass category. I'm hoping that maybe we can fill some of that quiet time. So hopefully, we'll be looking at a net gain in, in people, and therefore, the revenue from it.
John?
Bob, how many groups do you have? I know, like, Wednesday night, there are women's, Thursday nights, you know, the guys, certain, certain, how many groups like that? That would be pretty neat to have more of that, wouldn't it, Bob?
Well, we have.
That you can count on every week?
Yeah, we, well, and we basically have some every day, every day, other than Friday, which is not a big day. But Monday is our men's league, and that generally, you know, we've had as high as, it's been up as high as 112 players on a Tuesday night. You know, it has, like golf, it has gone down a little bit, so we're down to 88 this year. Our women's league is 60, 60 people, and that's on Monday nights. We have a couple of big leagues in the, in the daytime, too. Our senior leagues are pretty active. We have, our Tuesday morning seniors bring in about 60-plus golfers on Tuesday mornings, and on Thursday, about 40. And then we have a couple of smaller groups on leagues that aren't really our leagues.
No, they're a bunch of guys that get together.
Right.
Right, call themselves whatever.
We have a Wednesday women's group, and we have a Thursday men's group. So, you know, it's, we tried as much as possible, rather than have leagues, you know, every night, so that our season pass holders that get out of work, they're kind of shut out. We tried to kind of bring that all to a Tuesday night, for the men, for example, and a Monday night for the women. And these other things are just kind of little offshoots, where you're talking like 30 people, which is nice to have 30 regular customers, but they don't get, they don't freeze our pass holders out of getting out of work and kind of.
Yeah, regular, you can just walk in like a box, say, on a Tuesday night. Right.
Are there any rate changes? No. The, it's in here as far as reevaluating it. Of course, we're, we're still finishing out FY '15. Personally, I think that our, our rates, other than possibly carts, carts, I think, with the benchmarking, we were a little bit on the low end. So there's, would be some room there. I think our greens fee rates are pretty much right in line. The only other place I think that we're still kind of light, even though we had a price increase a couple of years ago, is with our season passes. And the problem in this area with season passes is the Cape Cod, Cape Cod for years pretty much gave memberships away. Of course, they sold them a completely different way. Most of the towns would own two golf courses. And they would save every other tee time for a paying customer, and they would give the season pass holders the ones. So essentially, they were selling memberships for one full golf course. But they would sell like 2,000 of them. Now, at a private golf course, you have a membership of about 325 people. So obviously, in the peak season, people are getting, you know, they're getting frozen out of their golf course. But because of that, they were able to sell them at a very low rate. So in this area, I think that people have a mindset of, you know, Cape Cod rates. And frankly, I mean, you know, our rates are fairly low in that area, I feel. You know, it's, it's part of the nature, and yet, and yet, we're not, you know, we're not turning people away, basically. I mean, so, you know, part of our challenge is that we are a relatively small town, and we have two private courses in it. So a lot of our avid golfers are at those two courses. So that's part of the, the other, one of the other goals is to, when I first took the job, the, you know, marching orders were no tournaments. And, you know, now we are slowly getting some tournaments. So I'm looking to try to form an inner club, which would, which would be a little, you know, maybe have half a dozen tournaments, so that the people who might prefer a private club for that reason, then they would have, you know, they would have an option to play some tournaments that might, you know, might bring some people over to us, because certainly our prices are far more attractive than the other two private courses in town.
Other questions? Bob, you do a great job. The course is great. I have to say, by comparison, I think we have the best between the other two. That's my, my personal opinion on it. I'm looking forward to 2017, I think everybody is. And obviously, to think about maybe updating certain things, you know, both with the facility and curbside appeal, and putting together, I keep saying this, but putting a committee together to evaluate that and to see how things are. I think next year might be the time to start looking at it, at least prospectively. Or if not this year, at least to begin to look three or four or five years down the road, what can we do to increase? You mentioned tournament play, obviously, the facilities needs to be improved.
Yeah.
And to make that more friendly, as well as maybe lockers for members who are there to be able to have a facility that they can go and change.
And that's where we'll leave some direction, you know, from the board. And the, the EDC, you know, the Economic Development Commission, is very interested in that area. And, you know, that, the report that they did showed that there was a need for a banquet facility in Green Bush, so they, they seemed to think it would be a nice fit. And, you know, certainly, it would help us to attract business, because we don't have the facility to take care of, you know, the weekday outing traffic, which would be a nice way to fill your, you know, your slower days. So that will be the next step, and I'm looking forward to that.
Well, good. Bob, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Can we move on to the assessors? Steve Jambowski, that's 141. Steve, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for staying with us. So your request was basically 203,000 and $199, and the recommendation from town administrator is 202,849, just a small difference in numbers. Pretty much by comparison to FY '15, which was 264, because we're going through a reevaluation, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Exactly.
So now we're back down to a number that was comparable, it's a little higher, but comparable to FY. Questions from the board? That's what I do it.
No changes in the department?
No, nothing.
Pretty basic. How'd the assessment go with the evaluation with the payments? Were there a lot of abatements?
Well, it's still going on.
It's still going on.
February 2nd's the deadline.
That's right. So we'll find out shortly then?
Yeah.
You'll find out.
Yeah, there's always a flurry of activity last week or two, so we expect the end of this week and next week would be, like, everybody wastes their last minute.
Those are people that just got the ballot, their assessments and their.
Yeah, exactly.
But they, when did they get their assessment? They got it?
January 2nd, 3rd.
Yeah. They have 30 days to.
February 2nd, yes.
All right, so if anybody's watching, you want to abate your taxes based on the tax, it's property tax you received, you have until February 2nd. There you go.
Correct.
Note to self.
So both, oh, sorry.
Mara, go ahead.
Any extra effort, I'm sure, is being made on behalf of your department to help educate the public with the different types of exemptions that you grant? Does your department have a webpage?
We do. Matter of fact, we're going down to the senior center next Wednesday.
Oh, great. Okay. That was my question. I just want to thank you for doing that, because I know you're probably going to get a lot more activity.
We try to do it every year. We try to. So Wednesday morning, we're coming down.
This Wednesday?
Yeah, next, next week.
Okay. Next week, December 17th. Thank you.
Good. Tricia, you have a question?
No, I was just going to say that both the assessor's office and the treasurer's office are getting lots of questions from residents already about the implication of the projects. And they have a handout that sort of provides some information.
Nancy did it.
Yeah, that, so that's available in the offices, and we're going to try to distribute Yeah, so that's available in the offices, and we're going to try to distribute those places. Probably put it up on the website, too, Steve. But they, he does, his office and staff do a tremendous job.
What we talked, we had a meeting today, we talked about the impact of the override of that exclusion. And how some people don't, taxpayers aren't always aware, well, they're aware, but it doesn't hit them until their escrow analysis, six months later or seven months later. The bank sends them a notice that there, there's a shortage in their escrow, and they have an adjustment at that point. The banks pay the tax, if ever the bank pays a tax in May, and that going next year, of course. So for us, it's kind of an ongoing process. It doesn't go away, so to speak, after the 30 days are up, or next year, when it really hits.
That would be helpful if it hit the website to some degree, you know, because people aren't going to know that until the first quarter of FY '15.
Next year, '16, next year.
And if they don't get that information, and they might not get it to the second quarter, and by then, the difference is going to be, you know, the bank's going to go out from four, and then they're going to come up with that, plus the taxes. So at least try to get that information out.
Oh, we have people all the time that walk into us in August, or not August, let's say when a bill isn't out there, in April. And why did my taxes go up? Well, they went up four months ago. But it wasn't until, again, until they got that notice.
And the other problem is when the bank gives them notice, too, which usually might be delayed, too. Again, thank you. Any other questions on, thank you for waiting, Steve. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, going to move on to the next one, which is town clerk. Kathy, I know you're here. 161. I didn't see it yet, Kathy, but I think we're going to have at least three more special town.
Bring it on. I'm ready. Come on, hit me with your best shot.
Hope it's in your budget.
Yes. Well, we'll figure that out, right? That's what this is all about.
All right.
I need a vacay.
This is a busy year for you, and I, for your office, we really appreciate it. And I know-
Thank you.
Just sometimes, just have to do it, but you guys have done a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you.
So there is no, there are no midterm elections, or not midterm elections, what do you call it?
Specials.
Federal, or, you know?
The only one we had for this year was January, and then the annual in May. So we're looking good.
So your appropriation from last year was 200,000. That was because we anticipated the elections. This request is for 1.93,000. You're off with the town administrator by a little less than 800 bucks, it looks like.
Yeah, it's close enough, yeah.
What's it, support services?
What is support services?
Yeah.
Support services is all the town meeting and election things. So, for example, programming, coding, the chips for the election machines, sound system for town meetings, census to convert the data and produce the forms, food for election workers, contracts with the programming company, and ballots to be printed, custodial services for the elections in town. Please detail.
So it went from nine, two years ago, to 38 this year?
Say that again?
It went from nine to 38, and now 26 next year.
I'm looking at mine.
It's because of the number of elections?
Yeah. It goes by elections and town meetings.
And a gubernatorial?
This year. I understand why this year is high. But in '16, I thought you just said we're only having two?
In fiscal, oh, I'm sorry, and we're doing 16. I'm sorry. We're doing, yeah, we're doing the annual, and, oh, presidential primary will be March of 2016. The annual town election is May of 2016. The annual town meeting, and a special town meeting, and a fall town meeting, we always put in the budget.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Does that help you?
Yeah, I guess.
I can look at that again.
Does this take into account for reimbursements we get, like, from the state? When you, when you have it budgeted for an election like that, where we're on with a state election? Or does it, or do you figure for the full cost?
We figure the full cost, and then the reimbursement will go back into the general fund.
That comes through the cherry sheet?
So that's really, okay.
It comes in separately. So this year, we got a whopping $1,800, $1,800.
Yeah.
Woohoo!
Yeah. It's minimal, but it's something, but-
Oh, we'll put that to OPEB.
Put it right up to a AAA.
Here we are. One notch away from AAA.
All set.
Thanks to Joan.
Kathy, have you bought the machines yet?
No, we're testing them out. We're testing one in one precinct in the May election. And then what we'll do is give my report to the Board of Selectmen, and with the pros and cons of both machines. We're only going to try out one machine that we're favoring over the other, based on our comparison of the two. And then we'll go to vote, have you vote on buying them. And then we have to do that, there's a certain amount of days that we have to do that before we can use them in a state election, and then it's different for a town election. So I'm hoping to use them for the presidential primary in March. If they, if it acts okay in the town election, and we're good to go, and you've listened to our recommendation for purchasing, and you decide to purchase, we'll, you guys will vote on it, and then we'll notify the Elections Division, and they'll give us the approval to use them in the, all of them, all precincts, all machines. Purchase, we'll purchase, and then we'll get the approval from the state.
So presidential, 2016?
Yes, the primary, not the election, the presidential primary in March of '16, I'm hoping. And I looked at the vote of participation from the last presidential primary, and it was, it was minimal compared to a really busy election. So that's what I'm looking for, for the first use of these machines. Because we will have support there that we will have to pay for. I forget what he said, when he, I think it's like 1,200 or 1,300 for the day to have support service there.
That's a good one to do. There should be a big turnout for that.
I think it's better and less contentious, content, what's the word? Thank you. Than a town election. You know, I think a town election can be a little funny if you've got, you know, candidates running against each other. And, you know, it's busier for us, town elections are, in that way. So this way, I think it's safer to go with the presidential primary. So that is the goal for that. Plus, a new election law's come out, which is a huge concern for me, which will be implemented the fall, presidential election, the fall, but that's '17. But that's a different story, so.
Other questions? Anybody else? Kathy, thank you. Thank you for waiting. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next one, which is the accounting. Nancy.
Yeah.
135.
Nancy's gonna, she's here all night, so we thought we'd go to Newland Bill.
Neil, come on over. Building inspector, 241. We'll get to that one. And 176. Let's do 241. Neil Dugan, our building inspector and building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer.
Good evening.
Good man, what a man.
I'll get to that after it's, Neil, looking at your, your budget, you're looking at 311,000. Town administrator has 305,000. Looks as though that the difference is-
It's a difference in?
Six.
More or less in part-time salaries?
Um-
A little bit.
So when I, when I budgeted, I budgeted for the salary of the prior secretary, and that was adjusted to reflect the pay of the new secretary.
Now she's going to be a paramedic, or she is a paramedic.
That's right. Make a lot more money.
Be one of our firefighters. All right, so that looks pretty good, Neil, budget-wise. Your budget.
Okay.
How's the permitting going? I was going to say-
Yeah, it's good. It's steady. You know, we're expecting a big uptick. I recently reviewed a chart that shows that we've got, I think, 563 new dwellings in the pipeline, either under, few of them are under construction, but over 500 are in the pipeline.
Would this be like Stockbridge Road or-
Stockbridge Landing, Herring Brook, 40B.
Herring Brook is coming for that.
Well, it's for sale, I understand. And Stockbridge Landing and the proposed 200 unit, Apria Toll Brothers. And then there's a lot of smaller developments, but they're popping up all over town.
Questions from the board? Neil, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
You got my vote of confidence, no doubt about it.
That's a great town.
And zoning, 176. Did everybody get, where most people get the Jambowski book? Is that, that was one of the things I wanted in the budget.
No, it's, it's something we're going to do. It's in the budget still.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons the budget is $1,000 less, because the reference man has been taken out, but they're going to be bought.
Okay. That's, not only for you, but also for zoning.
Well, I have a-
Planning should have one.
Yeah, planning has them.
They do?
Oh, yeah, planning, planning has one. I have one.
Use it.
I think it's, it's fairly outdated. So we're going to get three for the zoning board.
Did you hear that, Ann? Make sure you use that book.
Yes, sir.
All right, so-
Part-time salary is down?
That's down, once again, to reflect the change in staff.
Just the rate?
Yep.
And you've got somebody to replace Nicole?
Yes.
For the, okay, for the board. Good. Questions at all? Anybody?
Not at all.
Neil, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Neil.
You're welcome.
All right, let's go to technology. Bill, what's wrong with our technology here? It wasn't functioning earlier.
You have a cable in that budget, a cable. Sorry, it took so long to fix.
155, everybody. It is IT. All right. So Bill, your budget is, request is for 254,000, almost 255,000. Town administrator said, has actually given you more money by 5,000 for 260,000.
Equipment.
And is it?
Equipment.
Equipment.
And?
Some technical services.
Yeah, seen some increases in some areas and decreases in others. It's, I believe, it's essentially level funded from last year. Is that about right?
Yeah, last year was 253,000, right, 254. So it's just a little bit higher, is what-
About 2,000.
What, Bill? 4,000 for the Microsoft Office licenses.
Oh, that's the difference there in technical services.
4,000.
That's right.
Exactly, 4,000.
We need to procure, we rolled out our Exchange Server environment, and it's been rolled out to the fire department as well. We just have to get more licenses, basically. To, we're over right now. Microsoft's not listening. We need to get in compliance. So that's what it is.
What are the, what are the items in the office machine maintenance and the technical services?
Technical services, let me go through them.
Just the big ones. Is that, is that like the coffee machine, or is that the?
Payroll and excise services for customized data solutions that does all the treasure and water billing software is 42,500.
That's the service for that software?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, I believe, is the same as last year.
Okay. That's payroll and GIS, is that what you said?
The permitting software, which is for the building planning, you know, our building permits, and its hosting, is 19,700. And, some of the larger ones. We pay maintenance for our financial software, 13,000. And Exchange licenses here. The assessing software, which is Steve Jambowski's software, and also, we added online, so we have a new, kind of a new product there. It was, it was in the budget last year, though. So that's 15,800. Then as far as office machine maintenance, it's a lot of, primarily made up of our leases and usage on multi-function printing.
Other questions?
I just have a question. Eddie, I mean, I know it's not in here, but any thought to creating a line for future for contracted services at all to assist you? Because I know you're doing yeoman's work.
Thank you.
Just one man, manning the whole IT infrastructure and all the upgrades and all the, you know, Wi-Fi systems that you're bringing on. You know, I just, I don't know how we address some of the deficiencies that you can't get to, obviously, like, you know, just website enhancement and keeping up with all that data. And, you know, it's so important for us as a town to make sure we're putting information out there.
Yeah, with the, with, in respect to the website, it's designed so that the departments can individually manage their own sites. It's such a large workload, sometimes that falls to the wayside. Really is a push this year to, I think it's in my goals, actually, to further leverage the technology that we've already put in. And that's one of them. It's certainly, I'm going to do a lot more work on. I believe I'm going to get some help with that, I heard.
Mara, to your point, though, that's during the MMA, this Friday and Saturday, that's one of the questions I was going to try to search out with other towns to see what they're doing for communication. Because I realize, you're able to put it up there, but the content's got to come from the department heads, you know, or, and they're very busy. But I think it's important for the residents of the town to kind of figure out, what's that next, I don't want to say venue, but, you know, if it's not the newspaper, since she's not here, it's not the newspaper, because not many people are getting the Mariner. And then, you know, are they going to the town website, or are they using some kind of like Facebook or Twitter or whatnot? I think that's the next big step for us, to get information out beyond posting it or just putting on the website, is there some way-
We're going to get our posting courage.
Yeah. That's a great question.
Yeah, I think it helps with the, spoke about at the beginning of the meeting, about kind of a little public service campaign to sign up for the news feeds, and that's-
Great idea.
But of course, you know, the content in the sites and people that actually proactively go to the site, seeking out things, yes, should be more up to date. Although, in saying that, I live in a different town, and I think our website is superior to that town, many of the other towns around.
You don't have to tell us the town. That's okay.
As you already know.
Any other questions? No? No, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board. You did a wonderful job on the Wi-Fi in the harbor. And again, just so people understand, it's because of this guy right here who, who did it, and obviously with other people in town. But you came up with the idea, and now we have Wi-Fi in the harbor. It's a huge benefit for the residents and voters and businesses. So again, thank you very much for the hard work.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next one, which happens to be Nancy now. Nancy, that's 135, accounting.
Good evening again.
Nancy. So your request, let's see, your appropriation for last year was 258,000. This year, you're looking for 275,000. But there is a recommendation by the town administrator for 332, almost 333.
So I have two main changes to my budget. I'll jump to them if it's all right with the chairman.
Please.
The first is, it's time for our biennial actuarial review of our OPEB liability, because 65 million was fine, but let's see what it is now. So there's $10,000 in the budget for that. And I think last time it cost us 8,300. We'll put it out to bid, and we'll take the, probably do an invitation for bid, might do an RFP. We'll see how it goes. But I would expect that it's going to be about the same amount, somewhere between 8,500 to $10,000. The other item is the only new position being sought this year is in my department, and it's for a human resource specialist. And I think we're all very cognitive of the amount of hiring that occurs in the town. We had a discussion during the fire presentation about the number of firefighters that have just been brought on board, number of police officers that had to be hired this year. Just if any of you have been in Tricia's office lately, you know her running tally of the open positions. And I think we counted them today. There's like nine open positions that account for double digits of number of hirings. And it only gets more difficult when you're dealing with the civil service hirings. That's an extra level of difficulty. And it's not--
Those are new positions. Those are the positions--
The current positions that have--
Open.
Vacant, open positions that have vacancies.
For people who retired and moved on.
Yeah, whether it be from retirement or someone moving on, like Nicole did, Nicole moved on to become a firefighter, paramedic, but that opened up a position in both the building and zoning boards that had to be hired. Same thing happens all the time. We promoted from within for our chiefs, which then opened up officer positions, which then opens up sergeant positions, which then opens up patrolman positions, and it goes up the food chain. And you keep having to replace those positions, and it's a significant burden on the town administrator's office. But this position would also address the issue of the fact that we employ almost 1,000 people, but we have no centralized method of dealing with these people. If you want to enroll in health insurance, you're going to deal with the assistant treasurer collector. If you want to know the accruals that you get on your contract, you're going to deal with the assistant town accountant. If you're waiting for your offer letter, more than likely, you're going to deal with Tricia's assistant because it'll be coming out of her office, because more than likely, it'll be an appointment that Tricia has made. So, it's very fragmented. It's very hard to administer, and it leaves us open for a lot of liability and a lot of places where things can fall through the cracks. And what we're trying to address, and this is a part-time position, 30 hours per week, is to have somebody be in charge of this function. It's an extremely important function, and I would posit that if you are in any type of a, even small size company, but medium to large size company would have the number of employees that we do, they would have a human resource department. And we don't have that. And we're not trying to create one. We're just trying to create one person that will funnel the majority of these items.
I've always said we should, given the size of our town, the employees, and the fact that you've got health insurance.
Attorney for George and Ruth Kelly, who are the former owners of 12 Hillcrest Road. They live at 450 Country Way in Cituit. My address is 172 Branch Street, 174, excuse me, across the street from them. And with me tonight is John Dewane.
Yes, I represent the current owners of the parcel at 12 Hillcrest, James and Nancy Petiti. My name's attorney John Dewane. I live at 360 Chief Justice Cushing.
You'll be happy to know that you have two lawyers sitting in front of you, and we agree completely on this one.
I could see. I'm like, I'm very happy.
There's no fight.
Well, when you deal with land transactions, usually you don't have too many arguments. So, what's, in essence, is this. Hillcrest Road is up off of Barker Road. It's not far from my house. And it's, behind the Barker Road, Hillcrest Road starts. So, you start going back and around there. It's actually a paper street that connects to the intersection of Richfield and Barker, but it's never, has not been connected. And I think Mr. Ford--
Dewane?
No. Kelly, Mr. Kelly--
Kelly.
Had at least two lots, maybe three.
He had three originally, and then they were combined to two buildable lots.
Two buildable lots. And so, they've built--
Number 10 was built first.
And then there's this one that's--
Number 12 is the last one on the right as you proceed down Hillcrest from Barker.
There's another one across the street that's being built, but that's not his lot.
That's not his lot.
So, the problem here is that in order for the fire truck to come down, it would have been nice if it could go completely through, but it can't. So, they need to have a hammerhead, shall we say, it looks like a hammer, so that the fire truck can come down, turn around, and then go back.
There is no circle there, so that's why that hammerhead is necessary.
And so, ultimately, it looks as though that when the lot was sold, there was an easement, but unfortunately, or fortunately, we need to have a larger easement because the fire truck can't fit based on what the easement was. Is that fair?
There was discussion of an easement, and there was a preliminary drawing was made in 2011. At the time, the planning board reviewed the subdivision plan, and they endorsed it as approval not required because it met all the zoning requirements. There was no house being built at that time. There was no building permit drawn. So, the actual location of the easement hadn't been determined because there was no building, no improvements had been made on the property. That all started in 2014. The land was actually sold to Mr. Dewane's clients, the Petitys. They took a building permit out, started construction. And once the foundation was in, the engineer went back and redrew the actual proposed location of the easement, which was then reviewed by the fire department. The fire department at that point said, "We have a new truck on order, and we think it needs to be a little bit longer." So, five feet were added. So, it was originally 25 feet deep. It's now 30.
The only question I had was, is it going to be paved? I assume for the trucks, I assume it would be, right?
I believe that was part of the reason for delaying it, was they wanted to site it on the driveway. And so, now they know where the driveway is, and I believe that's where the easement's been drawn.
Hillcrest is not paved now, is it?
No.
It says gravel road.
Yeah, the road itself is gravel.
Right. And this is when you go down, it hooks to the right, and it's on the right.
It's on the, well, it doesn't really hook. It's pretty, well, it does curve to the right.
Right.
And it's the last house on the right.
Right, crossing number 13.
Correct.
Floyd Goff.
Yeah.
Are there butters to the property?
Um--
This lot here?
Yeah, to the back side, if you, if, on the other side of Barker.
Is that Richfield or Barker?
Barker. And then the other one would be probably off of Richfield. I'm not sure if there are butters. You can't tell. Yeah, they--
You can't tell from this drawing?
Can't tell.
And the reason we're before you is to ask the board to accept the easement, record it, because this is land court property. And their requirement is to have the municipal, whenever there's a municipal easement, to have the easement deed accepted by the cognizant authority for the municipality, which is the board of selectmen in this case.
Why wouldn't we do this?
It's an old brainer. Any other questions?
No.
I can take a motion?
Let me get to the page.
Will to accept the deed of easement by James and Nancy Petiti dated December 12, 2014, and to execute the acceptance of said deed.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Congratulations. Tell them the house looks very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you. Sorry to keep you so late, but I'm sorry. We have a lot on our agenda.
We appreciate it. Will we pick up the signed acceptance?
You can call me tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item, which happens to be--
Zone change.
Oh, zoning change request. This seemed to be like a zoning change request related to the condos at Cituit Country Club?
Correct. So, you got the citizens petition article that we talked about at the last meeting that was a little difficult to discern. I was contacted by the attorney representing the petitioner and asked them to send correspondence that would clarify what his intent was. But any zone change that does not, that is not initiated by the planning board needs to be voted by the board of selectmen to turn it over to the planning board, because that starts a statutory time clock of 45 days.
All right, so we need to vote it in order--
Just to vote, so the planning board can formally review it.
And review it and formally vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move the board's-- Anna, do you want us to, Ann, do you want us to send it to you, so you guys can review it?
They were in preliminary for this project. You know what they want to do.
Add eight more units.
Yes.
All right, motion.
Will the board's selectmen turn over the zone change request to amend the zoning article, section 490.3, Plan Development District Permit Uses, paragraph B, open space, residential and recreation to the planning board?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Maura Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. All right, next one happens to be a discussion, Clap Road Land Swap warrant article.
So, that's just informational, that in response to the board's discussion that this would be on the warrant again for the annual town meeting, we wanted the Clap Road folks to have informational meetings with the planning board and the conservation commission and to do a proposed rendering of the sighting of the property. Those meetings have all been scheduled and are taking place this week, actually, one tomorrow and Wednesday, Thursday, I believe. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was on your radar.
You say there's one tomorrow also?
There's, I think--
Conservation.
Conservation's first, and then planning. So, I just, that was, I just wanted to follow up because that was the board's request in terms of what they had to do to make sure it was on the warrant again. And they're also going to have that informational session for all the residents that they had scheduled at the Harbor Community Building. That's going to be rescheduled.
All right, so just so I'm clear, we're saving them a placeholder for the warrant concerning the issues or concerning the possibility of a land swap, the way--
The land swap article will be on the warrant, but you instructed in order for it to go on that these things take place informally beforehand.
So, based on their response, we can either keep it on or take it off. If conservation has a huge problem or planning has a huge problem, then we don't have to put it on the warrant, right?
That would be a conversation you'd probably want to advise the, Mr. Livingstone and Mr. Callen about.
Right, well, that's why they're going to these--
Yeah.
I would say that, you know, we would, here's my position on it. My position would be, since we're going to save them a spot, then we can't just pull the rug from under them. They get to go on the warrant. But I'm not going to tell you right now I'm fully supportive of it. So, I mean, I just want to make sure they're aware that I could very easily get up after going through this and seeing what the process is, saying I'm not in support of it. And maybe the board will feel the same way, and we're not going to support it. But I just don't think we should say, since we've given them a spot, given them that false expectation that they're not, they're going on and then say, "No, they're not." But I can tell you, after hearing everything, I'm, at this point, I'm like, you know, I'm not saying I'm supportive of it either at this point. Do you understand?
Yeah, I would, I would guess if, if they didn't have support of the board, then we wouldn't put it on the warrant.
Well, that's why it's on the agenda again tonight, because we've had those discussions, and they would have had an opportunity to petition it on, and they asked that question and it answered. They would still have the opportunity. And you said absolutely yes, but they have to go visit all these boards first, so people know what's going on.
And will they be coming before us after these two hearings?
I think, yes, they will, because you'll be reviewing the warrant.
It was my understanding that they, we were going to have them do this and then come back before us.
Right.
To understand--
They would do, they would do that under the normal course, and also you would like to see the rendering, I assume.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. I just want to make sure that's clear. All right. And now, the next one is a discussion, the planning board 40R.
Right. So, again, just to update the board, there's a public hearing on this, the 22nd, with the planning board. And I think Lorraine circulated something from the town planner today about questions that could be answered by the person for mass housing at the state in terms of the layout of this area and what's changed and how, since it first came to the board. And just to give the board an opportunity, if they had any further questions, to let them know that the hearing was Thursday night.
Where, this Thursday here?
Yeah.
Okay. What time?
Seven.
I, since we're in discussion, I won't be, I'll be brief. But I have reservations about this. I really do. I'm planning on going to the meeting on Thursday. I have reservations. I think, Sean, you hit the nail on the head the last time we had the discussion. Was it the end of December or was it beginning of January? December, I think it was, about, you know, let's make sure that we allow the overlay district to have a chance to go forward. So, right now, I'm not really, I'm not supportive of the proposed 40R at this point. I think my gut feeling is it needs more time to be fleshed out. If it comes back in a year, then I think I might have a different opinion. I'm really concerned about the design criteria because--
Laura has to get back to us.
She does. But I just want to share that. I know with the board, I had a discussion with Laura and Tricia last week, but I just want to at least let the board know that now. Anyway, any other questions on that?
Just the same thing you said. I mean, we spoke with Laura about it. We're not sure how much power we lose in the design process. I think the big draw to it is that you get some money from the state by doing it, but we don't want to be penny wise.
Height requirements, 45 feet. At that point, you can go up to 45 feet.
Yeah, goes up five, five more feet.
More affordable housing.
Yeah, more density.
Less control.
All right. Anything else? No? Move on to the next discussion vote, closing the April 13, 2015, special town meeting warrant. Entertain a motion.
Do we have a sheet?
Move to--
Move to close the April 13, 2015, special town meeting warrant at 10:02.
Second. By Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Moving on to other business. Right now, the minutes we don't have--
You missed one, John.
School building, school building appointment?
Oh, yeah, that's the other one. All right, which is the, hang on, so this is a school ability, school building committee appointment change.
Move that the board of selectmen rescind its appointment of Kevin Cafferty to the school building committee.
All right, motion by Mr. O'Toole, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move that the board--
Okay, I'm sorry. That was a motion by Mr. O'Toole, seconded by Mr. Harris. Go ahead.
Move that the board of selectmen appoint Nancy Hope to the school building committee.
Motion by Mr. O'Toole, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Now to other business. Do we have any correspondence?
There is one.
Oh, yeah.
This--
Letter to CPC.
He actually came to visit me during my office hours. Do you have that? Is that the end?
It's in the end. Let's--
What, the letter, the handwritten letter?
Nope. It's, no, it's from Mr. Calla.
Oh, okay.
He copied us on a letter that he sent to CPC.
So, evidently CPC must have some kind of application before it. We don't have a copy of any of the CPC applications.
Correct.
I think they're online. I think they usually do. But this individual, along with a number of his, his neighbors, they live on Vinyl Ave, concerning a path application. So, I'm not sure whether the application has a sidewalk, and they're calling it a path, and they're looking to add it on to Vinyl Ave, or whether there's some other path. But these individuals have indicated that after going to the CPC meeting on January 12th, they appreciated the committee and their professionalism, but they expressed their--
Concerns.
Concerns, and also, I think, their opposition to it.
Opposition.
And so, they're not in support of it, and they wanted the board to be aware of that. That's us. And, and so, I guess, would that be a fair analysis of it? Is there anything else?
No, no action required, just basically, I think, letting us know that there's opposition to the project that's before the CPC.
And so, just for their benefit, I guess, if it comes before us, if it's approved at CPC, then it will come to us in March. I think, Mark, they're coming to us at the beginning of March?
Yep.
So, we could have that discussion at that time, if it is necessary. Otherwise, we will not be--
Lorraine, can we get a copy of that letter with this, when CPC comes before us?
Yes.
Just so it's part of the contents of that.
And CPC does have a copy of the letter as well.
John? I just asked a question. I think I know the answer to it. So, CPC will not fund a sidewalk. Is that still correct?
Yeah.
I don't think they--
It's a trail.
Right.
Well, they've submitted it as a trail, just like the other Tilden project.
Right. And the difference being wider, maybe some green space between--
It's supposed to be Ender and all this other stuff.
Right. Okay. Just checking. I just, and then a comment. I think the rooting of the buses around Jenkins School, I've heard nothing but great things.
Yeah.
You know, it's improved, big improvement.
That's it for correspondence, right?
Another piece of correspondence you have is a handwritten letter from Mr. Currie regarding, thank the letter that the board sent him from the birdhouses that he built.
Oh, that's sweet.
He was thanking you for the thank.
Can you send him a letter back thanking him?
Well, he also invited John Daniel over to his house for lunch.
That was very sweet. I did see that. I didn't realize that was--
That's nice.
Very kind of him.
Very nice person.
And at a young age of 97 years, is that what I'm reading?
No, oh, my God.
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's very sweet of him. All right, any other business, folks? Any other business you want to--
I just have one thing quick. I met with Stephen Coulter from the Cituit Housing Authority, who'd like to start moving along some of their plans and, obviously, some of our frustration with having our housing trust committee, some vacancies. So, I just wanted to put out there that, Lorraine, have we gotten any new submissions for those two openings for the housing?
Is that where the one Stephen Coulter--
Yeah.
Was going to apply himself.
We talked about that.
As of right now, we have two vacancies still for the Affordable Housing Trust. We've published it in the paper twice.
Yep.
We did receive Christine Tarantino, we appointed, it was a new, but we still have two open seats.
So, I'd just like to encourage residents, if they're still watching this late hour or on retake, you know, retaping, to submit their interests, because it would be great to move along in another affordable housing development to help mitigate some of the, I think, housing issues that we have in our town to provide to people other than those that can afford $700,000 homes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a great cause.
Sean?
No.
Tony?
No.
No sports update? Okay. Do you think the balls were overinflated or underinflated? What's going on?
I don't know.
Okay.
When Gronkowski spiked that ball, it didn't look like it was under.
Marty, do you have anything?
No.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks. Thank you.